Welcome to San Clemente's Video Library. I'm Joanne Bade, City Clerk of the City of San Clemente. To skip this introduction, click on Skip Intro. This video will play on most Internet connections. To fast-forward or to advance to a particular agenda item may require additional loading time. To access a particular portion of the meeting, please click on one of the links on the right side of this screen. The Show Help link below explains various features that are available with this site. If you have questions or encounter difficulties, please call my office at 361-8200. Thank you.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Reverend Patrick Creer, Rector at St. Clement's by the C Episcopal Church.
Please stand for the invocation and stay standing for Councilman Everett to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance following.
Almighty and most merciful Father, we ask your blessing upon this council this night. For as you've called some to be preachers and teachers, pastors and priests, so you've also called some to be elected leaders. We ask your blessing upon these people and the important work that they do, that you may guide their decisions. And we pray for those for whom their decisions affect, the people who work in this community and those in our schools, our young people, those in our hospitals, those who work in our restaurants and retail stores, our retired folk, our residents, most especially those most vulnerable, our hungry, homeless and our poor. We ask that you will open their eyes to seek your will in all things, give them guidance and wisdom to make important and difficult decisions, always to act with compassion. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in honoring our nation. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Councilmember Doncheck.
Here.
Councilmember Everett.
Here.
Mayor Potem Ham.
Present.
And Mayor Brown.
Here.
First item on the agenda is presentation of a commendation to Jeff Goldfarb, City Attorney.
Now, this is a great opportunity. The only challenge is the person I'm presenting to is sitting over there instead of over here. Come on, this is your opportunity. This is great. Jeff Goldfarb has been a diligence servant for the City of San Clemente for 28 years. Twenty-eight years now. He began his legal counsel at the City of San Clemente on May 6, 1987. I happened to be a sophomore in high school when -- Wow. I don't think I've gone on a date yet at that point. By the way, did you have hair then? Or no? No, really? No.
Sadly, it all left.
Okay, all right, that's good. Yeah, no, that's good. Well, this'll be a good opportunity for you to get that done. So, he was appointed to the position of Assistant City Attorney. And I'd like to read the commendation here because I think it's important to note many of the things he's done. Wherein, as recognition for his superior knowledge of law coupled with his dedication and commitment, which cannot be questioned, to our city and with the highest level of legal representation, Jeff is promoted to the position of City Attorney on April 3, 2012. And whereas his expertise in the areas of Federal Fair Housing Act, Fair Political Practices Act, the Brown Act, California Environmental Quality Act, Planning and Zoning Act, and Subdivision MAP Act, and whereas during the course of his city service, Jeff Goldfarb maintained the respect of many city councils, city staff and the citizens of San Clemente for his outstanding performance, integrity, judgment, professionalism, and of course, his sense of humor. And whereas after 27, eight years of city service, Jeff Goldfarb has decided to leave city service to pursue his dream to sail around the world, and whereas he is taking the mayor of San Clemente with him --
Oh, my God!
This is incredible. Hey, it's in a proclamation. That means it has to happen. Whereas it is fitting and proper that our city, City of San Clemente, formally commend and thank Jeff Goldfarb for his many years of exceptional legal services for our city. Therefore, I, Mayor of San Clemente, Tim Brown, acting on behalf of the City Council and all of our citizens who hereby recognize Jeff Goldfarb for his outstanding legal representation at City of San Clemente, and furthermore, and on behalf of the council, extend him our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for a job well done.
Jen, you might want to hit the clock. Wow, it's really hard to believe that 28 years has gone by that quickly because I still remember my first meeting where the chairman was Ed Questkin, and I had to tell him it was illegal to ride a bicycle on the sidewalk going the wrong way down the street. And of course, the valuable legal opinions I've given have only grown since that point in time. There has been -- I can't tell you how wonderful it has been working for the city for the past 28 years. As an attorney, it has just been a dream job. I am working with some of the most dedicated people I think I've ever met in my life, some of the brightest people I've ever met in my life, and people who care more than you can possibly imagine about the welfare of this city and the people in this city. And in that regard, having clients like that is nothing short of a dream job. It has just been absolutely fantastic. I guess if I had a regret, I think the only regret would be this. I watched Wayne's World 2, and I was under the impression that when you're on local cable access, that is your instant ticket to stardom. And so I waited and waited. See? And I waited and waited for those calls to come from Hollywood, and unfortunately, not one ever did. And just, you know, I guess that would be it. That would be my regret, is that I never became famous because of my, you know, being on TV all the time.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges is Tom Cruise was another city attorney, and he got the call. I bet you're a stock.
Well, you know, he did join the firm.
Yeah, he was right, exactly. He's not a attorney, but he played one on TV, right? You guys, Jeff Goldfarb for his wonderful service, another round of applause.
Next is presentation by Fiona Mann and Vincent Jin with the County of Orange concerning the status of Avenue La Pata at Camino de Rio Gap Closure Project.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight at the San Clemente City Council to talk about the La Pata Extension Project. I'm Fiona Mann from Orange County Public Works, Project Management Division. First, I'd like to give a little bit of project background. The La Pata Avenue was included in the Orange County Master Plan of Arterial Highways in 1963. This means that La Pata is a key element in the countywide circulation system for existing and planned land uses in Orange County. In 1970, the existing La Pata Avenue was constructed as an access road to the Prima de Sacha landfill in San Juan Capistrano. In 1982, La Pata and Camino de Rio were shown on the City of San Clemente's general plans and the Talega and Forster Ranch specific plans. In the time between 1982 and 2005, the development in Orange County began and the project plans were set into motion. In 2005, the Project Environmental Impact Report was initiated, and in this report, four project alternatives were studied. Impacts like aesthetics, air quality, noise, and traffic were evaluated. And an alternative that met all the project alternatives, all the project objectives with the least environmental impacts was selected, and we decided to move forward with the project. Here is the existing configuration of La Pata as we all are familiar with today. We have La Pata Avenue in the City of San Juan Capistrano's city limits from Ortega Highway to the entrance of the landfill. And we have Avenida La Pata in the City of San Clemente's city limits. And in this project, we'll be eliminating the gap in between. So the project improvements extend from Ortega Highway in the City of San Juan Capistrano to Calle Saluda in the City of San Clemente. Due to funding constraints, the project is divided into three phases. The La Pata Gap Connector is shown in blue, and in this phase, we'll be extending the existing La Pata Avenue just south of Vista Montana in the City of San Juan Capistrano to Calle Saluda in the City of San Clemente. We'll be constructing four new travel lanes, and this is estimated to take 28 months. We're anticipating to issue the notice to proceed in about a week, and the construction of this phase is expected to be completed in fall of 2016. The La Pata widening phase is shown in yellow, and this phase will be constructing one additional lane in each direction between Ortega Highway to just south of Vista Montana. And this phase will take about 18 months. The Camino de Rio extension is shown in orange. This phase will be extending the existing roadway up to the newly completed La Pata Avenue, and this will take approximately eight months. The construction contract was awarded to Suket Construction in December of last year for $73 million. And our funding sources include OCTA's Renew Measure M, also known as M2, State Prop 1B Funds, La Pata Road Fee Program, OC Waste and Recycling, City of San Juan Capistrano, City of San Clemente, OC Public Works Road Fund, Ladera Ranch and Rancher Mission Viejo Community Facilities Districts. This project has many project benefits, but the most important one is definitely increasing mobility within the county. We'll be providing an alternate route to the 5 freeway, providing, bringing the communities of San Juan Capistrano and San Clemente together, improving access to schools, shopping, and recreational amenities, and also providing an alternate route for emergency evacuations. As with all construction projects, we do anticipate some temporary impacts from construction. We have a traffic control plan in place for closures and detours. There will be some construction noise, and we'll make sure that we meet the, we're within the noise ordinance. We have odor control measures for potential odors that we might be expecting from excavation in the landfill areas. We will be using water trucks for dust control. We'll give advance notification for any closures to hiking and riding trails. And we have a community health and safety plan in place for this project. All the countermeasures are in place and incorporated into our plans and specifications, environmental documents and permits to make sure that we reduce the impacts to the public. So given the duration of the project, we want to keep an open line of communication with the public. We have an outreach team dedicated to this project, and the public can stay informed by visiting us on the website dedicated to this project, follow us on social media like Facebook and Twitter, and by calling us or emailing our dedicated phone line and email address. And we'll be leaving these business cards with the city, and all the information is also on here as well. So right now, I'd like to show a short 3D simulation on the project, and afterwards we'll take questions. So this is, we're starting off at San Clemente, crossing Camino de Rio. This is the pedestrian bridge that we'll be building for connecting the riding and hiking trails. These are under crossings for landfill vehicle use. And this is the landfill right here. We're crossing Vista Montana. And now we're within the San Juan Capistrano limits and reaching Ortega Highway. And this is basically an overview of our project. So at this point, are there any questions?
Any questions? Paul?
I got a question. By the way, I'm gonna have my party hat on on Friday. I'm thrilled that this is happening.
That's great.
I'm absolutely thrilled. This is gonna be a great thing for not only the citizens of San Clemente, but anybody that drives by San Clemente on the freeway. I think it's gonna be fabulous. Your map there called, on one stretch, it called it Avenida La Pata, and on another stretch, it called it La Pata Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
We changing the name?
Well, I guess the name is La Pata Avenue in City of San Juan Capistrano's limits, and it's Avenida La Pata in San Clemente. And we're working out what we're doing with the name when the project is over, but at this point, we don't have an answer yet.
I think if San Juan changed their name to Saint John Capistrano, then they can have that designation.
That's a good idea.
But as long as they're San Juan and we're San Clemente, we win, right? Is that how that? I do have a question. We've got a groundbreaking ceremony this Friday, and it's for the public to attend. Is that right?
Yes, the public is welcome to attend if they would like to see the project, you know, break ground and get started.
And that's at 10 o'clock?
10 o'clock, and it should last about an hour and a half at the intersection of Calle Saluda and Avenida La Pata.
Okay, right, the end of La Pata here in San Clemente. And are they doing a different groundbreaking on the other side then, too?
No.
Oh, okay, so we win that battle.
Yes.
So we should name it right there, you know? Great, that's wonderful to hear. Yep, just to reiterate, you said groundbreaking this Friday. When is it gonna open, scheduled to open?
We will, we are issuing notice to proceed next week, so we're hoping next week.
No, no, when will it open?
Open, open.
The roadway open.
The roadway will be open to the public fall 2016.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
It's gonna be great.
Thanks for having us today.
I did get resident that reached out and said that we should, before we open it up for cars, that we should have a biking/walking day. I don't know if that's possible at some point, but to basically open the road just for pedestrian/bicycle traffic before --
Yeah, well, definitely.
-- the roads open for everything else. Or high-speed drag racing for Bob. But other than that, just the bikes and the pedestrians.
We'll definitely look into that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Please send back our appreciation to the county. Under County Supervisor Bates' leadership especially, we've appreciated all of the leadership and including Harry Purseau.
Next is a status report by Sharon Hyder, Director of Beaches Parks and Recreation, concerning signage in the Pier Bowl area.
Good evening. Can you go ahead and pull that up? First graphic, it's not on here. There we go. Thank you for having me tonight. What I wanted to show you was just how we are doing our work, our normal work, just a little bit different and hopefully a little bit better, going, I hope, good to great. And this, I have to thank my amazing team because this is a project I didn't want to do. They came to me and they said, "We need to put up some signs. Should we relook at these things?" I said, "We don't have time to do this. What are we doing?" And I have this amazing administrative assistant who has graphic abilities named Miley Seivers, and she secretly did this behind my back and figured out that all of that gobbledygook that you see on the left-hand side could be boiled down to what you see on the right-hand side in a concise, beautiful fashion that also follows our wayfinding program. So this was a neat little project of folks that worked interdepartmentally, so this is my admin assistant doing graphics for us, my team of Dennis Reed, Mark Chavez, Jim Smetoni getting out there, cutting things down, making it happen. And so on the left, you see all of the gobbledygook that we would normally put up, and on the right, if we boil it down and make less redundancies, or no redundancies, and follow our new guidelines, we end up with one hopefully more elegant sign. So we are on the path of doing this up and down the beach trail as we can afford to do that and as we replace signs. So I did want to let you and the public know that there is a different look out there. It is intentional, and we're moving in that direction.
That is great stuff. Yeah, thank you, Sharon.
Thanks so much.
Really well done.
And this is a CPR demonstration by Orange County Fire Authority personnel.
Now, we're good to go?
Can we wait?
Yeah, so because, you know, we fortunately have very proactive, you know, folks in our fire authority, and they're actually out doing fire authority work at this point, so they're saving people and putting out fires. So we're gonna wait a few minutes for the rest of this crew to come back, and then we'll be good to go.
And we have one more special presentation, and that's a presentation of an award of excellence from the California Park and Recreation Society to the Friends of San Clemente Beaches Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Thank you. And I would like to first tell you a little bit about this award. The Friends of San Clemente Beaches Parks and Recreation Foundation received an award of excellence from the California Parks and Recreation Society, otherwise known as CPRS. And this is, for those of you that don't know, CPRS is a membership organization for parks and recreation professionals and commissioners throughout the state of California. There are 3,100 members and represents 535 local parks and recreation agencies throughout the state. So the fact that our foundation was recognized at this event is very phenomenal and really shows a lot about our great group. So the mission of CPRS is to advance its profession and its members through education, networking, resources, and advocacy. And the Friends of San Clemente is being, was recognized for being a champion of the community at the 2014 California and Pacific Southwest Recreation and Park Training Conference, which was held in Ontario, California, March 5 through the 7th this year. And the City of San Clemente Beaches Parks and Recreation Department, through us, nominated the Friends of San Clemente for this award. And just a little history on the Friends is, the Friends of San Clemente Beaches Parks and Recreation Foundation was formed in 2000, in the year 2000, to support the City of San Clemente's Beaches Parks and Recreation Department's effort in providing quality programs and services. They have made substantial financial contributions, including over $200,000 to help support the funding of the Vista Hermosa Sports Park, and they also have contributed thousands of dollars to support community events, programs, and, most importantly, scholarships. And so tonight, I would like to bring up the foundation members that are here. They're wearing their great shirts. And we have here founding member Bill Thomas, former president Tom Wick, treasurer Jim Nielsen, and current president Peggy Vance.
So are they state champions? Is that what we got? State champions?
Yeah. And so this is the award, and I know they wanted to say a couple of words.
Pam, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, members of our beautiful city. We're very, very pleased with this award. The foundation, San Clemente Friends, began actually because we thought we needed a second swimming pool to the old Hanson Pool, and we really got into trouble then trying to raise money through surfing contests, skateboard tournaments, golf tournaments, we invite you all to that. I'd like our new police chief to not allow anyone to leave until the foundation receives donations. We've incubated at least four different foundations, including Courtney Sandcastle and the Apothecary Group, and now we're working with the lifeguards for their foundation. And we just have been overwhelmed with this honor, and we appreciate Pam sending all those lives to the society. And we thank you for allowing us to work so closely with Sharon and her marvelous staff. We think we have the best Parks and Rec Department in the state as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And then one other thing is that this will be at the San Clemente Aquatic Center on display for everyone to see.
Sharon, you wanna jump in or what? Were you in high school when we were?
Sharon, you oughta jump in or what? I think she wrote this on her voice.
Over at Christmas?
Christmas morning. That's why.
All I know is the State Committee time is gonna have a glossy picture.
I'm just shocked that she puts, I have no idea. Because she doesn't see them all. That's the thing, some go directly to the council, so it kinda looks like one is more.
Yeah, those smiles start turning into grimaces after about 30 seconds, you know? I think we're good to go on CPR.
Okay.
I'm a dummy most of the time. I don't need to be one for the, yeah, yeah. I believe Chris Hamm is very expert at -- Being the dummy? Being the dummy, being a victim, victimized dummy.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. Hey, before we start, I'd like to welcome Chief Score back to the battalion. He was moved temporarily up to the east end, and we lost a very valuable resource to the City of San Clemente here. He's spent a lot of time here, and he knows the community very well, and he serves the City of San Clemente very well. I'm glad he's back, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back, Chief.
Yeah, it's a pleasure to be back, and I got Chris in today with a nice little structured fire in Dana Point, so they know how to treat us right.
Chris actually said that, so, just as a little welcome back. I have an alibi. I have an alibi. I was doing yard work.
So on behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority and the American Heart Association, we wanted to bring a message forward today in regards to CPR and how any of the general public and citizens in general can really help us out and somebody that they may witness in a possible heart attack situation. So what I'd like to talk about tonight is, it's called hands-only CPR. And what that is, is all you need to do is witness the individual going down and the ability to just do the compressions. We're not asking, nor the Heart Association is asking to do any breaths. It's just a lot of compressions in a short amount of time, and I'll get into that a little bit. So what we're asking is, if you see a teen or adult collapse, the main important thing first is to call 911. We get a lot of questions or concerns about, "Why couldn't you get here faster?" Or, you know, and as we go back and we look at the call history, we see, well, we did respond within the allotted time, but as we question them, we find out, well, nobody called 911 as soon as they witnessed the individual go down. It was one of the other people in the group or whatever as an afterthought, or it just didn't happen immediately. So that's the first important key, is to go ahead and dial 911 to make sure our dispatchers can get us on the road and responding to the call.
Chief, can I interrupt you for a second? I asked for this demonstration to come from the fire authority because I think it was a, it's a wonderful idea. And the point you're just raising there is so crucial. I wanna emphasize that again because when you read some of these accident reports, you see that the delay in people calling 911 can be critical because you guys need all the time you can possibly be afforded to get to the scene. The chief's point is so important. If you see something -- The chief's point is so important, if you see something happening, call 911 immediately. It's so important to get things rolling.
And whether it be a medical aid, or a structured fire, or whatever, because I'm usually one that fields the complaints on the questions of response times, and as we show, it's all computer data, and we're pretty much able to show most of the time that we did respond within the allotted timeframes, but we just weren't notified early enough. So that is the first key in our CPR here. And the second thing then is to push hard and fast in the center of the chest to the beat, and the Heart Association has the classic disco song, "Staying Alive." So as you know, that's about 100 beats per minute there, and that's what we're really trying to do, and I'm sure Councilman Hamm may not even remember the disco song "Staying Alive," but...
Could you sing a few bars for us, just...
No, I did practice it, I'm a little driver right now, Mayor, but anyways, so that's the main thing, the two important points that we're trying to get across is, number one, to access the 911 system, and then to push hard and fast in the center of the chest to the beat, "Staying Alive." And if you have any questions of, well, why are we only doing the hands-only CPR, a couple stats for you here, is that the sudden cardiac arrest is the leading cause of death. Nearly 400,000 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests occur annually within the United States. So that's 400,000 people that are not near a hospital, they're in their homes, the parks, anywhere, a shopping center, occur in the United States annually. And sadly to say, that 89% of the people who suffer in out-of-hospital cardiac arrests die because they don't receive immediate CPR from someone on the scene. And most Americans, 70% of those, feel helpless to act during a cardiac emergency because they don't know how to administer CPR, or they're afraid they were gonna hurt the victim. Again, with this only hands-only CPR, we're hoping to get that point across, that you may, you know, break a rib or whatever, but as long as you're pushing hard and fast, that person definitely has a chance to live if they are able to act quickly, if they do find somebody that did go down due to a cardiac event. And unfortunately, only 41% of the people who experience a cardiac arrest at home, work, or in the public do get the immediate help before somebody from the EMS system arrives. So again, hands-only CPR has been shown to be as effective as conventional CPR, which is chest compressions and breaths for a sudden cardiac arrest at home, or at work, or in the public. And it can double or even triple a victim's chance of survival. So what we thought we'd do tonight is just, due to not having a table, we have our emergency transport here, Transport 60. They're gonna bring in our dummy, and I think Councilman Hamm did say he wouldn't mind volunteering to really show how to do 100 beats per minute, and he may even get him to think "Staying Alive" as he's doing it.
That's what I'm talking about, that's gonna be my point of the evening right there.
We're gonna have the ET come on in, and, you know...
The real question is, is the dummy a nice-looking blonde?
I'm sorry, not tonight, Councilman.
Well, no, Chris, I can throw this guy in, I just...
Chris is a nice-looking blonde, there you go.
So, yeah, yeah.
I don't think this one's gonna make it, Chief. I believe without a lower intestine, we're not gonna do much here, yeah.
Picture this, this is definitely a Facebook picture.
I'm gonna be sweating at the end of this.
So what we'd like to do is just, we'll demonstrate real quick what basically 100 beats per minute is like, and then after that, we have our paramedic engine 60 here. They're just gonna go through possibly what the equipment is. Basically, we're bringing a portable ER room to that victim's house or location, and we'll just review real quickly the gear that we have, that we do bring to an emergency call like this.
Welcome, gentlemen, good to have you here tonight.
Appreciate your patience tonight, and then, Chris, if you wanna just jump in. So basically, we're looking at...
So first thing we do is call a code, get the car? Okay. Chief, can you call 911?
I've got that handled, yes, we do.
Okay.
Perfect, so just like the chief said, first thing we do is direct someone to call 911, so Chief, can you call 911?
I've got that handled, dialing 911.
And we're gonna go ahead and start CPR. Tommy Ozotti here is gonna check for a pulse, he doesn't feel a pulse, so he's gonna commence CPR at 100 times per minute, since we got good-looking Tim Buffy here. He's gonna check for respirations.
Again, it's hard and fast, in the center of the chest, is all the American Heart Association is looking for at this point.
911's here. Look at that.
So again, we'll just kinda show some of the equipment that a paramedic engine company or any of our other crews would bring in if they would come in to...
Doctor Waylon Hamm, would you see a CPR?
And again, people feel more confident performing hands-only CPR, and are more likely to remember the correct rhythm when trained to the beat of the disco classic "Staying Alive."
Captain Brech, do you wanna explain what ET Duffy's doing at the head here?
What the second rescuer has is what we call a BVM, bag valve mask, and he uses it to supply respirations, breathing, for our patient, and it's hooked to our oxygen tank, so the patient's getting oxygen, and he's supplementing his breathing. So even though the patient isn't breathing, we're breathing for him just as a compression to providing the heartbeat, the pulse.
Our paramedic engine 29 to be 20 feet person.
Let's go, guys.
I'll be darned. Unfortunately, our ET, I believe, has a call, so...
Just these guys are leaving?
Yeah, we can still kinda, we'll review real quick some of the other equipment that our paramedic engine company carries, and...
Where's the monitor?
Chief, did they...
The ET did, yes, yeah.
Okay, this is our defibrillator, and most offices and companies have AEDs, which are the automatic defibrillators. This one's more complex, it shows the rhythm on the monitor, and it also does a 12 lead, which they do at the hospital. And the main reason we do that is to determine the severity of the... So this also will, we can manually shock the patient if he's in a shockable rhythm, or she, and so we'll see the actual rhythm on the screen here. So we don't, in, back in the old days, they used to have the pads, like you can see on TV. These are just stuck on, so we don't have to hold them anymore. And it also gives our SpO2, which is the amount of oxygen in the blood, and so it's a very, very valuable tool. We'd be lost without this in a cardiac event. And then also over here, we have our drug box. So we do pretty much the same, a lot of the same stuff the hospital will do as far as cardiac drugs, you know, I'm sure you've all heard of epinephrine, and so we have high dose epinephrine, and we also have morphine, and we use that a lot for pain, that's a whole different story, but it's also used for cardiac events. And, Greg, you wanna add?
Well, we have a collection of cardiac drugs in the box, the same type of drugs that you would find in the emergency room. So as the chief said, we're kind of a portable, somewhat of a portable emergency room that we come to your, to your house, to your place of business, wherever it may be, and we have the first line of drugs that you'd find in the emergency room, right there in our box. That along with our cardiac monitor and CPR, we can do a lot of things they do in the ER, and we can make the ability to resuscitate that patient a much higher percentage. So, but the biggest key factor is citizen CPR, that plays a biggest role. Studies have proven that citizen CPR increases the chance of resuscitation by a very large percentage. So it's important for all citizens to get out, go to CPR classes, learn, and not be afraid to interact. Even if you don't remember exactly how to do it, whatever you're going to do is going to be helpful. So if you get out there, you engage and you act, you can make a difference in a life. So that's the important thing here. And then we come in with our things, we add to it, we take the patient to the hospital, they have more things they do, and the outcome is a higher percentage for positive.
No difference between child and adult on some, not in the CPR, on some...
Faster. Faster for a child in different, different form, but that's kinda like a whole nother class, yeah.
Yeah, any infants, right, yes, right, exactly. Yeah, all infants up to age one, children up to puberty, and anybody found unconscious and not breathing normally, or victims of drowning, overdose, or whatever, we do encourage more advanced CPR, but, or at least start what they can, and we can supplement it when we get there.
But it's not just a statistic, I mean, we can all say we've seen a bunch of times where people, the best chance of survival are if someone is doing CPR before we get there. If they're just laying there on the floor and someone doesn't wanna do anything for them, they're pretty much done, you know, because it takes us however long, four, five minutes to get there, and if your brain goes without oxygen or circulation for five minutes, that's, that's pretty much it. But if you got a good CPR first, like we've been saying, it really helps.
And I think it's just been within the last year, the city gave a proclamation to the older gentlemen that were on the tennis court, that one of their buddies went down, and they started CPR within the city here on the tennis court, and he was here to accept the proclamation with his friend. So it is a witnessed event and had a positive outcome, so, yeah, that's very good. Yep, no problem. And if any of the citizens or anybody at home would like any more information on this, they can go to our website, ocfa.org, and right in the center there, under Safety and Education, is one of the boxes. If they scroll down a little ways, they'll see Hands-Only CPR, and it goes right to the American Heart Association website. There's even some training, online training there that they could do, or if they want any further information or training, they can sign up right through the American Heart Association off our link there. So anything there is available to them. Great, thank you. OCFA, guys, thank you very much for coming this evening, thank you, that was very helpful.
Hey, before you guys leave, the guys in blue and black always get all the credit for wearing the badges, but in the audience right now, we have Linda, who's one of the nurse educators, and she's in charge of making sure that these guys do a good job on every call they go to. She trains them on a quarterly basis, so...
Thanks for coming out tonight, I can't tell you how much, how valuable it is, how much we appreciate it. Thank you.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation, and I have received some speaker cards.
First, we have Dion Randall, and following Dion is Paul Simmons.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for this evening. I wanted to make a presentation to the City of San Clemente. My father was the architect on the San Clemente Post Office on Pico, and so he had passed away a few years back, and in storage, I found his original rendering of the post office that I thought they might enjoy, so that way all can...
Very sweet, thank you so much.
What year was it built, do you know? You know, all I can remember, I was really little when I came down here, when we first started developing it, and it was, I think it's the early 70s?
Yeah, I'm looking at the cars.
Yes, somewhat futuristic.
You know what's cool about this, I was just sitting in the mayor's office this afternoon, and the walls are absolutely bare, so I think we have a spot for this picture.
It needs a better matting, though, you know, I just brought it off storage, and it's a little...
That's how they did it in the 70s, we're gonna keep it true to the original.
It's the original frame, too, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that consideration, thank you so much. We should get those cards restored for original condition.
Is that supposed to be a... I don't know. I think one of them might be a bad model.
Thanks so much, and thanks to your dad for contributing to San Clemente that way. Uh, next is Paul Simmons.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I just wanted to take the opportunity to formally introduce myself. I am Paul Simmons, your new Southern California Gas Company representative. I've been in, I've been in place here for about three or four weeks, and so I thought I would come down this evening and say hello. My business cards I've given to the clerk to hand out to you all, you all should have received an email from me in recent weeks just saying hi, and so I thought I'd come and put a face to the name. Just let you know that we're here to answer any needs that may arise from a gas company perspective. We work very closely with our partners at Sempra, it's San Diego Gas and Electric, and we'll continue that partnership in doing our best to serve the city here of San Clemente. I'm thrilled to be here, and what a wonderful place, you can't beat the view, and it's a great city to be involved in, so I look forward to working with you for years to come.
Thank you so much for coming, Alzer, I'm welcome. Uh, next is Timothy Bruin. I thought it said Timothy Brown there for a minute, but it's Bruin, it's a much better spelling. But I can't make cards. And following Timothy is Cindy, Cindy Villarette.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, my name's Timothy Bruin, I'm a resident of San Clemente, and I had two items I just wanted to discuss and throw to the council, and the first is the dog park. It's excellent. We have 16,000 dog owners here in San Clemente, and it's well-maintained, but one of the things I was talking with the fellow canine owners is where the water fountain is, it gets real muddy, seen some people slip, wasn't sure if you wanna send the city staff out there, maybe drop a couple cubic yards of concrete to make it a little safer. And it's in the small dog park, is the leaky faucet. Your city's been very responsible, the workers have come out, they fixed it numerous times, but it just creates about a three-by-five-foot area of just plain old mush and dirt, and I know it's a dog park, but my thing was for the elderly people or the little kids that might slip and knock their head and think maybe a little concrete would, you know, solve the problem, so it's not so swampy in the area. And my other point I wanted to bring up is, with our city growing, I think it would be really prudent. I know our sheriff's department has a patrol car, I haven't seen it lately, it's usually the ASAP, the license plate reader, and hearing with LaPada and all the other things coming in, and with the AB 109 and seeing what happened to Bruno, the canine in Anaheim, I think it's very imperative that we give our law enforcement every single tool that's effective. And with the ASAP program, it's an advanced surveillance deal, basically reads the license plates, but there's different cities, Lakewood, City of Industry, and so forth, and the County of LA that use it in a fixed capacity, and basically any felons that happen to come in to the city alerts the officers, much like a low track that goes with the helicopters when a car's stolen, the helicopter's able to track the vehicle and so forth. And so being a good city, and being progressive and not reactive, and seeing that there's a family-oriented city, I thought it'd be a great addition to have staff look into that fixed system, and basically Lakewood, Industry, and so forth. I don't work for the company, I just read about it, I thought it's a great tool, so any bad guys that come in, it notifies the law enforcement right away so they can interact, so there isn't any violent crimes against the people. I know we can't all be in bubble wrap, we can't have a deputy on every corner, but I think it's an important tool, especially with all the felons that are released under AB 109, and we saw what happened in Anaheim, unfortunately, we don't wanna have any to our deputies. And I know our line of duty depth down here was Officer Steed, and we have all the things, so it's just a, you know, we're talking technology, it's a great technology, and I think our city has the resources to be able to pony up and give one more step to law enforcement to protect the citizens. So thank you very much for your time, and keep up the great work, and great job.
Thanks, Timothy.
Thank you.
Before we go on, Paul, I know we just reused some pavers from an old project over at Courtney Sandcastle, maybe we can throw a couple of those up by the dog drinking fountain?
Yeah, we'll have Beaches Parks and Rec maintenance take a look at that tomorrow.
Perfect.
And do something about it, absolutely, we appreciate it.
I know a few Eagle Scouts always looking for projects, too, so it could be a very... I know a few Eagle Scouts always looking for projects, too, so it could be a very good use of their time and energy.
Perfect.
So, thank you. Uh, next is Cindy Villarett.
Hello. At first, I'll say, this is my first city council meeting, and I appreciate your humor and camaraderie, but also the serious issues that you're all dealing with and taking care of in a great way. So thank you for that. And you have my vote on St. John, Capistrano, and, and also the walking day on La Pata. Sounds good. I wanted to inform the council of a more serious issue, so hopefully it won't ruin the party atmosphere. There's an issue that's been threatening the safety of our children. Since the issue involves new technology, there have not been any laws or ordinances enacted to protect the children or even allow the police to stop the problem. The issue that I'm referring to is the use of remote-controlled drones or helicopters that can be equipped with video cameras and can be flown directly over our children while they're at school or down at their face level. Many of these drones have multiple spinning propellers and weigh several pounds. The obvious danger is that the drones will either hit our children or crash land on them, causing serious injury. The drones can also be used by deviant individuals to video our children in order to monitor their movements and single them out for abduction or abuse. These drones can also be equipped with other semester or dangerous accessories, including projectiles and explosives. There's no dispute, we're living in dangerous times, and we've seen several senseless killings, such as Columbine and the Boston Marathon. Last month, this issue hit home when a remote-controlled drone was repeatedly flown over my daughter and the other kindergarteners on the playground at our Saviors Lutheran School. Despite warnings by the principal and visits from the police, the individual defiantly kept flying his drone, equipped with a camera, just a few feet over our children's heads. The police said that there wasn't any law against this activity, so that there was nothing they could do. The officer advised us to seek help from the city council, which is precisely why we're here tonight. I, along with 250 other parents in our city that have signed a petition to request that the council enact an ordinance to prevent flying of drones or unmanned aircraft within a certain height or radius of the school campus while the children are in session. According to the American Civil Liberties Union, legislation has been proposed in 43 states and enacted in nine states. The state of Idaho prohibits drones used in police investigation without a warrant, but it also prohibits aerial surveillance of someone's property without their prior consent. The state of Montana also prohibits the private use of drones as well, and Texas prohibits drone photography. Isn't the safety of our children as important as the protection of our property? Charlottesville, Virginia, City Council member DeeDee Smith voted in favor of prohibiting the use of drones. She even said that drones are, quote, "pretty clearly a threat to our constitutional right to privacy." If we don't get out ahead of it to establish some guidelines for how drones are used, they will be used in a very invasive way, and we will be left to pick up the pieces, she said. I respectfully request that the council will address this issue before it's too late. Thank you.
Cindy, thank you. Took a lot of courage to get up there, San Isidias, and chat about this. You know, the council, well, to speak candidly about this, council's very aware of this issue. Our enforcement personnel, sheriff's department, a number of different groups have been working on this issue repeatedly, and particularly our code enforcement personnel. And I think the situation that you're specifically, that you're referring to in St. Lutherans, that it has progressed and enforcement action was taken, and I think it resolved itself. But it's something that we obviously have concern about and are discussing internally. But I want you to know that we have, you know, we are circulating it internally, and we're contemplating those issues. Perhaps the next step would be for us to, you know, have something presented to us on exactly where we stand and what the city is doing regarding that.
Absolutely. And our code enforcement personnel and sheriff's personnel have been, I think, in contact with you as well. And I do know that the individual that has been flying the drone has ceased. At least, that's what we're being told, unless something has changed. But as of yesterday, they had ceased flying the drone. So that particular situation was. But if council would like to agendize this or receive a trade memo perhaps on, on the progress and what we're doing.
Lori, yeah?
Yeah, I would like to see trade memo, and I guess I'd like to look at it both short-term and long-term, because as you pointed out, ma'am, it's a state issue, and it probably would be most effective to get state legislation that addresses the privacy and the air rights and, you know, some of the freedoms that are involved or not involved in drones. So I'd want to look at it from that, and then also the impacts for CUSD, because it could be something that is unique to schools as another solution.
Absolutely.
And that would involve Sacramento or Capistrano Unified School District. So there's kind of three levels of possibilities here: local, CUSD, and then state.
Can I answer back on a couple of points?
Well, sure. I mean, if you have some feedback on those.
So, the problem is, even if it were CUSD, this is a private school in particular. So we, we need to address all the schools. The second thing is, the flying did cease, but we don't know why, and it wasn't because anybody told them no. We told them no after day one. It kept going for two weeks. So anyone who keeps up activity after they've been told by authorities to stop is a little bit more concerning than if they, you know, they had. So it is a state issue, but there are also other cities that are taking these things on, such as Charlottesville. So it's not unheard of to be handled at a city level as well. So thank you for.
Well, yeah, we hear your concerns. I think something that's very important about this is also education, because I think you did the right thing. You raised awareness. But we have enforcement action we can take on a city level that's in place right now to stop things like this from happening, and further fines and, and visits and other items. So maybe as a follow-up to that, if people want to know a little bit more about it, they could have a presentation, a little bit about what the rights are and what the obligations are and say.
Right. Because my husband, who's also sitting here, went into the police station directly after it happened one day that he saw at school, and we were told, we heard about it the other day, we already visited, and there's nothing we can do. So there's a conflict of information on whether it can or cannot be addressed.
I think information could certainly help in this.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and frankly, whether or not that specific issue of flying drones is, is addressed endangering public safety by flying a remote-control drone airplane glider over the heads of people, no matter how old they are, is endangering the public safety. So there certainly are things we can do about that. So we will.
Yeah, absolutely. If you go on YouTube and put in drone crashes, you'll see plenty.
I'm sure we'll address that.
Okay.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Next is a very uniquely named Pirates of Penzance. This must be a local residence who, yeah, oh, hey, it's a modern Major General coming on up here. Come on up, folks. From the San Clemente High School Theater Arts Team.
These guys are on the parade.
Not this time. All right. Hi, we're the publicity crew of San Clemente High School. I'm Sam. This is Briette, and this is Emily. And we've captured some pirates with us. From the Gilbert and Sullivan Pirates of Penzance, but with a steampunk twist. Please come and support the CHS Theater Arts on April 18th and 19th at 6:30 PM, April 19th at 2:00 PM, which is the matinee, and April 24th, 25th, and 26th at 6:30. Tickets are online right now at schsdrama.com. And it's $10 for students and $15 for general admission. Please also like our Facebook page at CHS Theater Arts. We'll see you at the show.
Sounds fabulous, guys. Thank you so much. It's one of my favorites. My brother actually memorized the entire song of Major Manager, yes, and he was incredibly irritating after he learned that. So I want you to know, that is not something I would recommend anyone do on purpose. Thanks, guys, for coming out tonight. Really appreciate it, Dad. Yeah. Hey, George, why are you not in this picture, bro? You're the original Pirate of San Clemente. Yeah. Oh, that's great. Um, next is Tom Marrier. Tom, that is a tough act to follow, right there.
I understand. I understand. Members of the council and Paul, good evening. Tom Marrier, I live at 413 Avonita Vicaro here in San Clemente. I speak tonight regarding the restriping of Avonita Vicaro. As you know, this matter was considered last month. However, at that time, the actual bicycle counts were not available. Those numbers have subsequently been provided to all of you, and they show minimal use in comparison to actual vehicular traffic. Also during the discussion, one council member stated that homeowners could back out of their driveway into the area next to the curb. But that premise is not true if cars are parked at the curb as they often are. That leaves only the bicycle lane to back into or the traffic lane itself. We need to keep the center turn lane as it is, as it currently exists. And I'm here tonight to ask the council to reconsider its vote on the Avonita Vicaro restriping project. The fair solution to all parties is to approve option D. This gives the bike riders a wider bike lane than they currently have. It retains the center turn lane, which the homeowners want, so it's fair to them. And city staff has verbally said that they could live with this option. This option meet, excuse me, this option meets the fairness test. It's fair to everybody. And I urge you to reconsider the Avonita Vicaro project and vote for option D, as in David. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Of course, Paul, isn't that coming back to us at some point in time anyway with the, because we asked for some different turning, turning lanes and stuff. So we want to receive a design.
Okay.
Okay. Could we have a motion away reading and full of all resolutions?
Some of, wait a minute, wait, before we go on to that, I need some clarification on what Jim just said there. Would you run through that, Paul? Are we getting that back?
I think that was coming back, right. Is that coming back at the next meeting or the one following?
Not at the next meeting.
Not the next meeting, so the first meeting in May.
I can check.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had some very specific requests in terms of some of the turning lanes that they didn't have.
The turning lanes as well as the bicycles.
Average design.
Right.
Well, is your idea, then, that when it comes back, option D still be part of the staff report?
Whatever comes back at this staff report, that's a point in time when we get to discuss anything.
Well, then, let's specifically ask to have option D included in that staff report discussion.
I, I, I wouldn't include it, but that's, can we talk about this tonight?
It's actually not agendas, so I think.
It's not on the agenda. You can ask for things to be agendized, but you can't discuss the merits.
Right.
I think at that point, we could certainly talk about it.
As long as it's, as long as it's agenda.
Okay, then I am making a request that when the staff report comes back, somewhere in it, it contains the Plan D that was, I believe, staff's recommendation the first time around. Option D.
I don't remember the, I don't remember the exact staff.
Okay, well, option D should be included in the staff report.
So we had a motion. I didn't, it was, no, I don't even remember who made the motion. Motion by Lori, second by Ham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Okay. Closed session. Report, city attorney.
There is nothing to report from the closed session.
And I would like to have for the record that I had recused myself from closed session, item C, which was the Chamber of Commerce agenda item.
Okay. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. A member of the public has requested the removal of items F, G, and H.
Thank you.
You said?
Yes. F, G, and H, the three Marblehead items.
I don't have anything to pull. Bob, do you have anything?
6B3.
Lori? Jim? Chris?
Move with the balance.
Motion by Lori, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes 5-0. Let's start in order with Bob with 6B3.
6B3 is an extensive discussion that took place at the Planning Commission about zoning permit streamlining. And I would just like to encourage the Planning Commission and my colleagues up here that we continue to monitor this situation. It's such a very important issue. We want to, we're trying to make this process better, but we don't want to go too far. And I think the, the Planning Commission did a good job of, of speaking about both sides of that issue. I wanted to commend them for that. And I also wanted to alert my colleagues that, that is a crucial issue that we don't want to, we don't want to overlook. So that's all I wanted to say about it. And with that, I'll move 6B3.
Motion by Bob, second by Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Uh, next is item F. Member of public pulled this item. We have a speaker card from Michael Floucheur. I'm absolutely certain I mispronounced that, and I apologize ahead of time. Oh, okay, well, I could give myself a little cuff on.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on May 1st, 2007, the city council approved a request by SunCal Marblehead LLC to allow an amendment to the site plan permit 9716 to allow the development of custom lot homes ranging in size from 6,000 to 9,600 square feet on 66 individual lots within the 69 Lot Custom Program area. It also required that three individual lots within the custom lot area, lots 140, 145, and 146, and three production homes, lots 147, 167, and 168, be limited to single-story homes. It would also allow the merger of two individual lots into one or three individual lots into two and homes up to 13,000 square feet on lots 78 and 132. Excuse me. The residents of Colony Cove, where I live, especially those of us who live on the edge, let me restate that, those of us who live on the property line with Marblehead Coastal, want to be sure that these provisions will still be in effect when any new owners take over the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have some staff that can chat about this? Tom, can you, can you refer to this and answer Michael's questions?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tom Bonniget, Assistant City Engineer. The answer is yes. The actions tonight on these three items do not in any way change any of the previously approved site plan permits, conditions, approvals, et cetera. The custom lot restrictions on height for those lots, all of that remains unchanged. These items are simply assigning to a new party development obligations, maintenance obligations. So all those approvals stay intact.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that clarification. I hope that answered your question, Michael. Floucheur, because I'll pronounce it again, because I'm so good at it the first time. And then, by the way, I'm sorry, and I did mention, but that is for item F, G, and H, all on that same card.
I'll move all three.
Okay. Motion by Lori, second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first item is public hearings. You can consider a request to consider a 33-space beach parking lot and associated accessory structures located at 1832 North El Camino Real.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Amber Gregg, project planner, along with Bill Cameron, city engineer. The item before you tonight will discuss two different things. The first is appropriation of funds, and the second is the approval of discretionary applications. We'll let them clear out, sorry. I am the opening acts, so I will be going over the entitlements, and then I'm going to hand it over to Bill, and he's going to discuss the portion of, regarding funding. Before I start, though, I wanted to direct your attention to the diocese. There is an additional condition of approval up there that was requested to be incorporated from the Planning Commission, and unfortunately did not make this resolution, and that's why it's on the diocese for your consideration tonight. So, the proposed project is located on El Camino Real between El Camino Real and Caia de Seche, and it is between Colony's Coffee and Ich Berry's, just to orient everyone. Last August, the city council approved a CIP project to develop this parking lot into additional beach parking. Working with a consultant, the staff developed a preliminary plan, which is here, which includes a 33-space parking includes a 33-space parking lot with one vehicular access. The center area is interlocking pavers with asphalt parking around the edge. There are pedestrian access points on all four corners with enhanced pedestrian access closest to the beach side along El Camino Real and Caia de Seche. There's also a sidewalk that's been added along Caia de Seche and that was very important because this is located in a pedestrian overlay. The plant palette includes drought-tolerant plants. We'll continue our Washingtonian street tree along El Camino Real. There are canopy trees in here, but they have been selected based on being a low canopy tree because this is located within our view corridor and we did not want to impact that. And the lighting on the plan will match our existing lighting, but will be compliant with dark skies as well as not have any light spillage. Amenities in the parking lot include bike racks, benches, a pay station. The city is also looking into a kiosk and there is an electric car outlet. There are basically three structures on site. One is a decorative archway along El Camino Real. That is because this is the gateway entrance and since it's in architectural overlay, it's required to support our Spanish village character. It is treated with a smooth white stucco finish and tiled, single-barrel tiled roof in the detail that's on the bottom left-hand corner. This was our inspiration palette that we had. All the images, with the exception of the arch, come from the historic structures in the area. And the archway, we borrowed that idea from San Barbara. Oh, this is an updated one. With that, that concludes planning's portion of the presentation and I'll turn it over to Bill to discuss funding.
Amber, before you, can you just go over real quick with me the paper you mentioned about the canopy shade that you dropped off on our desk?
Yes, there's a concern when we have canopy trees that they are trimmed too much so the canopy actually can't grow and it doesn't provide shade. Planning Commission is concerned about that and they want to make sure that the maintenance that happens on those trees allows the canopy to go out, not necessarily up to impact the view corridor, but to provide shade in the parking lot.
Okay, it just seems strange to me the way you read the applicant's show, maintain the applicants' us, correct?
We do condition ourselves on things, yeah, for future meetings.
Okay, just making sure I'm reading this correctly.
But Amber, isn't that a valuable consideration here? Don't these trees stick right into the view corridor?
Yeah.
How are you going to mitigate, mitigates my favorite government word, how are you going to mitigate that?
Well, we chose low-growing canopy trees for that reason because we didn't want a huge canopy to block that view, but we did want some trees in the center aisle there.
So how high are they going to be?
I'd have to defer to, do you have any notice? I am, I'm not sure the specific height on there. We can look into it, but I know that they can be pruned to stay below, you know, a 15-foot height limit.
Bill Cameron, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I thought maybe there was going to be a couple of slides on the financing, but apparently they didn't make it into the presentation tonight. With a judgment in the Walker versus City of San Clemente lawsuit, which had to do with the beach parking fee program, there's decisions the council needs to make with regard to this project and the continued funding of it since those funds may not be available in the future. And currently, we had $150,000 budgeted in the Public Facilities Construction Fee Fund, Beach Parking Reserve for this project. Approximately $55,000 of that budget was spent prior to the final, or prior to the decision of the court on January 22nd or 3rd of this year. So there's still work to be done on the design of the project plus we need to construct it. So what we're suggesting is that the city council consider funding the rest of this project or advancing funds from the, I'm going to get the right name here. I lost it. The Developers Improvement Fund, Commercial Improvements, from funds that were received from the Talega Development through the Talega Development Agreement for revitalization of North Beach. So staff is recommending that the council approve a supplemental appropriation of $835,000 in the Developer Improvement Fund to advance the cost, yeah, advance the cost of this project. And if the city decides to appeal the lawsuit and was successful, then that advance could be repaid by the fund, by the Beach Parking Reserve. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer it on that portion of the presentation.
Is there more presenting after you're done?
Do you have more? Well, there were some questions that came up from individual council members during the, over the past week. Trying to find my list. One question was how much money is left in the Talega Development Fee? There's about $1.23 million in that fund right now, so if we transfer the $835,000, that leaves about $400,000 within the North Beach revitalization. There's also questions about whether it could be, this revitalization fee could be used for other projects in the area and the answer is yes, if they're related to North Beach revitalization. Let's see. And then there were, there were some questions about direction that the city council gave when the conceptual plan was presented, I believe it was last May, and the staff did include in the RFP to hire the design firm to do this, to complete the plans, included in that the requirements to consider those items. And Amber did briefly discuss how some of those were being handled in her presentation tonight. So are there other questions that you have? I can, between the two of us, we can try to answer them.
Okay, I have a couple, so bear with me. Okay, so I'm on page 7A30 and it talks about, all in, about $7 million of Talega development money. And so my question was, and it reads like this, city can use the first, the first million of the community enhancement fee for Casa Romantica. So that's been spent?
That's been spent, yes.
Okay. Then it says the next $1,500,000 can be used for the revitalization of certain real property in the downtown parking study area. Has that money been spent?
Yes, that was spent on the El Camino Real Revitalization Project where we did the paver sidewalks, the landscaping and bolt-ons.
Okay, so that's gone, okay. Then city's authorized to use the next $1 million for the revitalization of the North Beach area. So that's what we're talking about, okay?
Right, which has grown with interest earnings up to $1.23 million.
Then it continues to say city shall be authorized to use the balance, which is $4.5 million for any public purpose. Is that money gone?
What I found out this afternoon was this was spent on the Vista Hermosa Park.
Okay, so that's gone, so there's only a million dollars left?
Basically, a million, two, yes.
Okay, and then, so then my next question, which was in the email I sent you, could the million dollars that is being contemplated for the project in front of us tonight be used for restroom improvements at North Beach, at the beach?
I would think so.
Could it be used for Casa Romantica?
I don't believe that's in North Beach.
I'm sorry, Miramar. Could it be used for Miramar?
Possibly.
For Miramar? Okay, so it could be used other ways besides for a parking lot?
Definitely.
All right, thank you. So, because at one point, how we spend a million dollars is an important conversation. Okay, then my other question has to do with page 7A-94. Can't believe 94 pages. Okay, so when staff first presented us with the conceptual design back, I think it was in May?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay, and we had a real healthy conversation here at the dais about what we were calling organizing principles or guiding principles for the design we wanted to see. And there were five principles that were captured and they had to do with safety and in fact, they somehow got into this RFP. Safety, ease of access, sense of entry, landscaping, integration of improvements with surrounding properties, view corridor opportunities, and design of adjacent sidewalks. Okay, so I appreciate that the concepts made it into the scope of the RFP, but what concerns me is it looks like we just spent $150,000 to get refinements on staff's original design. And so I was hoping you could show us, to refresh our memory, the original design that was brought to us in May, which caused us then to come up with this, you know, this is what we're looking for, versus the one that we're looking at tonight. And I'd asked if we could have that PowerPoint tonight?
Correct, and there, there's two, oh, there's two parts, I think, to your question. One is you're talking about the $150,000. Our, we are actually, we budgeted $150,000 for the design, which includes the design firm we hired plus staff.
The construction drawings?
But we're not contemplating that we're going to spend that total amount on that effort. In fact, I believe the contract was around $89,000, is that right? It's the design contract. And that was not just, and what I mentioned, and I don't know if you saw the email I sent, but basically the concept, my, concept is more kind of the tip of the iceberg. So that came up with the ideas, the concepts of what this park, this parking lot might look at, like, and then get the city council's review of it to see if the city staff was heading off in the right direction. So when we got that direction from the council, then we needed to have somebody do the actual design. And there's a significant amount of effort needed to design this project. We have to survey the property so that we can build it and.
So that's all been done between May and now?
Quite, well, quite a bit of it is. We stopped the design of the project because of bringing this to the council at this point. We wanted to get the approval of the conditional use permit and if we got the go-ahead with the funding tonight, then we would authorize the consultant to go back to work and finish the design. There are quite a bit of the ways through it, but there's a lot of civil engineering, electrical engineering, there's landscape architects working on this, surveyors.
Well, I guess what I was surprised, the direction to the vendor was that the RFP includes a conceptual design. The consulting team will work with the City of San Clemente to finalize the preliminary design. And so I thought we were looking for fresh thinking based on the citizen input that we had had in May that ranged, you know, it was a pretty healthy discussion. So I guess, can we look at what we saw in May and then look at?
I think I better bow out on this part because I wasn't.
You weren't here, yeah. I just want to see the two side by side or if you could, we've got a copy of the current. Is there a slide of the May design? Okay.
Whoops, hey, there was good design. So.
No, that's today's design because it's got the little snail shell.
We do not have a slide of the design that you saw in May. We only have the slide of the design that is today. But it's my understanding, and Hon, I can probably speak to this, that the preliminary design is very close to what you're seeing today as far as.
Like amazingly close. I mean, gateway, gateway, sidewalk, sidewalk, I think the bike rack moves five feet, you know. So, anyway, okay. I just wanted to kind of understand how that happened because.
Maybe I can shed some light because I've been working on this project and put the RFP together. Basically, back in February 19th and also May 7th, there was a conceptual design that was developed by RRM engineers that was presented to the council along with other options. And that conceptual drawing is in the council package even now because I believe Amber put it as a part of the Planning Commission action. If you go. Oh, in the entire. It was just a kind of pretty picture here, but if you look at.
Is it 7A44?
7A, A4, A4, yes. And then there was one on 45 and 46. It keeps going, 47, 48. These were the drawings that were presented to the council back in May 7th as the concept drawing that was in discussion in addition to the other concept, Plan B, that was on your slide a minute ago by Mr. Nicole. I think he presented that concept.
I'm sorry, the one on page 7A44 is the one that was attached to the scope of services as the conceptual design?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we did is we started with this one. We included the concerns that you have, you know, some guidelines you have provided during May 7th meeting. That kind of was the basis of the design. And design proposal included the preliminary design to final design stage. And what we had in May 7th was just the concept drawing. And the design services included determining the boundaries, legal boundaries of the area so we don't encroach on anybody's property, the survey of the site so we know the grades, geotechnical investigation, make sure there is no geotechnical work we have to do, and also take that concept and address some of those issues that has been brought up. Make sure they are addressed in preliminary design. For example, the pedestrian access, make sure from El Camino Real all the way to the crossing at De Sheca has a clear path for a pedestrian, for a safety. And, you know, other four or five issues that was also given in the guideline were addressed in this preliminary design. And this is about 40% complete design. We have 6% more to go. So that is what is in front of you right now for us to bring it to completion for bidding.
Okay, thank you very much.
I've got, I've got a question for you also before you. How much does it cost to put in an electrical charging parking spot?
I have a detailed cost estimate in the preliminary design stage. The allowance for that is about $6,000. We put it in as an allowance to be able to accommodate an electric charging.
Well, that's just for the design, no.
That's for construction only.
That's not the equipment. The equipment is, well, no, no, that means it'll accommodate, means it'll have a power there and then you have to put in the equipment.
Yeah, see, we have to bring the power because we have lights. So we have to bring power to the site. So what we have to add to that is whatever equipment is needed for charging. At this time, it's just a $6,000 allowance, but as we finalize the design, we will fine to in that number, so I can't.
Most charging stations I see are around 40 grand for proven equipment. Is that number off?
According to the estimates that I have, but I can check further.
Okay, I would be interested to see how that reconciles.
Because we can always delete that from the contract very easily.
Okay. Okay, Bob, any other questions?
I did have one more question. The million dollars we're talking about tonight, this would be for a money person. Could we use it for the Ole Hanson Beach Club improvements? I'm getting a head nod, well, you're not city staff back there. Yeah, okay, thanks, Brad. Do we know? Can it be used for?
You know, the contract says that it can be used for North Beach revitalization without defining what North Beach revitalization really means. Seems to me that that seems fairly consistent with the concept of revitalizing North Beach. So my, my answer would be, yeah, you could use it.
It's very general when we read that, the requirements for it, it's not very specific at all, just North Beach revitalization.
I think it's purely reasonable to assume that by doing that, you are revitalizing while working toward the revitalization of North Beach.
Any other questions, Jim?
No.
Okay. Let's, let's hear from members of the public on the side. Go ahead and open the public hearing. First would be Brad Malamud. And following Brad is Don Slater. Don, you have just, you have two cards in here. Are these on the same item? What's the?
Same item, but one is for myself, separate as a resident and a person living in North Beach and the other is representing North Beach Community Association's position.
I think it's creative. I don't know if it's permissible, but give you a little extra time on the three minutes just to get. minutes just to, to get everything in. If you could, try and fit it in, though.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Brad?
Yeah, a few things, and I'll try to keep it short, and I ask for extra time if I can get it. But first of all, the $55,000 that Mr. Cameron talked about, Mr. Goldfarb states, it's not, it's $42,748.23. We sent Mr. Goldfarb an email last night at 9:30 about that. And I'm going to pass this around, because I didn't prepare to talk about it, but $55,000 never simply doesn't exist. And it's really troublesome that we don't get, I don't want to say it, that we don't get the numbers that exist. This is your own statements. Number two, as far as the North Beach, I don't know, I don't remember it specifically, but it comes from the Tlaga agreement. And it, I don't think the word revitalization is there at all. I think it can be used for any purpose in North Beach, but Mr. Goldfarb could address that. But I don't think the word revitalization is anywhere in the Tlaga agreement. However, it's, it's self-serving, it's okay. You might be right on that. So, you know, our view is that the law is very clear that the 100, whole 150,000 has to be returned, and it has to be returned immediately. At, at a minimum, the 107,000 some odd dollars that I gave to the package to you has to be returned immediately. Mr. Goldfarb, we sent an email to him, I didn't get a response, I don't know if he sent one, but it was sent to me about whether that money's going to be returned. He said it wouldn't be spent, but that's real different than a return to the Beach Parking Fund. The law requires it to be returned. If you appeal and win, fine and dandy, you can then spend it. As far as this project, I think it's a tremendous waste of the Tlaga funds. There is no documented shortage of beach parking in North Beach. We all know that. The August 2009 study states so, that there's a minimum 50% surplus. Why are we spending 850,000? Mr. Holloway in 2011 said it costs $3,000 per space. It's ballooned to over 25,000, and apparently the 40,000 for the electric charge station isn't even in the budget. What's it really going to cost? 100, 1,500,000 when we're all done? There's better use of this money down there than to waste it down there. But that's the council's choice. You've got to decide what you want to do. Finally, it is April Fool's Day. I thought this kind of was an April Fool's joke, that you're actually going forward with it. But on a light note, I'm going to miss you, Joe, I'm going to miss you, Jeff. It's been fun fighting with you, so to speak, and I wish you the best on everything. And I will make this statement. We've asked to meet with Jeff and Mr. Owen, and we never got a response. We tried to meet last week on Thursday or Friday. I don't know if they just didn't get the email or what happened. But if he's only, if you're only here for two more weeks, we're open to meeting with you and trying to resolve the beach parking conflict. We'll be available whenever, if it's possible to get that done. That's a council decision, but if there's any way we can try to get this all wrapped up, the lawsuit, before you leave, we would welcome that. If not, then we'll go forward as, as it is. But we're, we're not trying to be, we're trying to get this resolved. We've attempted to do it, but we haven't gotten the ability to do it. So that offer's open. I wish you the best of luck.
Did you send an email?
I sent Madison to you last Monday and asked me to meet Thursday or Friday last week. Sent it to both of you.
Next is Mr. Slater. Thanks, Brad.
I'm going to first represent the NBCA here. And I'm going to take this off so I can read. I'm the chairman of the Traffic, Parking and Safety Committee for the NBCA. That is the North Beach Community Association. We put a lot of thought, time, care, and love into North Beach. We, the board as a whole, are the, of the opinion that the ECR lot is, does, as designed is necessary to the future function of North Beach. The lot will provide a welcome entrance to San Clemente and invite travelers to stop and enjoy the North Beach area. The design and layout is functional and beautiful, and will create a new beginning for revitalization of North Beach. This is for me. It's so easy to look at a traffic study and say, "North Beach doesn't need parking." But does anybody in this building know or live on the streets of the bowl of North Beach? I can see a couple, and that's it. I am sick of fighting for parking all the time in my neighborhood, and so are my neighbors. It is a terrible inconvenience. And if you can build more parking, maybe it'll help. There is not enough parking in North Beach. I don't care what anybody or any study says. Go live there. Many days out of the year, the parking in the bowl area of North Beach is all taken. Beach, trail events, trail parking and events parking fill all parking in North Beach. This, this lot is absolutely necessary to help with, help the local population cope with the future growth of the North Beach experience. I'm really close. Ellie's Table is an example of the revitalization of North Beach. They employ about 17 employees, most, almost all of which are residents in San Clemente. This business has done a beautiful build-out. Now it's time for us to do the same. Those jobs provided there for humans that live in this city, that pay taxes in this city, spend in this city, this is what we need in this city, is revitalization that benefits us. And they deserve a lot of recommenda, recommendations for what they've done. And Jeff Goldfarb, I coil ropes. I promise to sit on the windward side of your ship, and I don't eat a lot. Please take me with you.
You have space on the boat. What do they call it when the boat goes over like that? Keeling? Keeling?
Yeah, get on the windward side.
We'll talk.
Thank you, Don.
I'm sorry, if any, are there any questions of me or my crazy intentions?
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it.
Thank you, too.
Next is Gene Gilbert. Following Gene is George Gregory.
Quick. Hey, Don, when's your next meeting?
Tomorrow night.
Where at?
Oh, the Traffic Safety and Parking-
No, no, the North Beach Association.
17th?
17th.
17th, the Cafe Ray.
At what time?
At 5:30 to 7:30.
Okay, thanks.
At Cafe?
Cafe Ray.
And it's a mixer-style meeting, so you can get some people and have their food.
Okay. Yeah, we do it mixer style these days instead of so, mixer style. Hi, Gene Gilbert, North Beach, I'm a San Clemente resident. And I just want to say that I support the plan. I like the way it looks, and I think it's something that's going to be needed. I think, I commend you for being proactive and looking towards the future instead of where everything has been. Because with development up on Marblehead and, and as the economy kicks in, we're going to need more parking for the beach, because businesses will be using, will be using the parking in the lot as, as it was designed to. Because I know it was there to support beach parking as well as businesses and stuff like that. So I just want to say I support it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And thanks for, for bringing that sweetheart with her little cat, too. It's great.
She comes to the locker room.
She's great. She's great. I think George has a stuffed animal just like that.
Most likely, several.
George, and the next is Ricardo.
George Gregory, North Beach. Thank you for having me. Build it, build it now. We do need the parking, we're going to need the parking. But as we build anything, we know it affects the surrounding area. This has a lot of wasted space and can create an awful lot of opportunities here. Getting a bus turnout on El Camino Real before Pico there is very important. Many, many people get stuck behind that bus. And the way we got our traffic lights working, you sometimes will sit there for two lights. When somebody is in a wheelchair or loading up a bicycle, or they're handicapped, they have a hard time getting off and on the bus, you've got people waiting behind them again. The bus stop where it's at now by the 7-Eleven has created a loitering problem, where, of course, the sheriff can't really enforce it, because they all say they're waiting for the bus. This would definitely separate that problem and move the new bus stop to the new bus turnout. I, I can't condone building this parking lot without the bus turnout. That would be just silly. Mrs. Donacek, great idea. Let's pull some money out of this thing. What do we need an arch for? We need an equipment room on the Oldie Handsome Pool House. That increases square footage by about 30%, and also opens up a beautiful view room. That would be a big improvement for that area. We would also, if you're going to put an arch in there, put it in the triangle area. We're really worried about the triangle area. It needs an identity. We're afraid somebody's going to come by and say, "It's just parking, you don't need it. It's ours." No, it's the citizens', it's the public's area. And it's not to be sold to commercial interest or bastardized some other way. I'm hoping, and it's not, it doesn't have to be anything to do with the parking lot, but I'm hoping that when we do add a few spaces here, that we can delete the parallel parking along De Sheca. De Sheca is a very dangerous street, and it's all very dangerous in there with the parallel parking, the skinny street, the big delivery trucks, the buses, all these things that go in there. And now we're going to have a parking lot and more, more activity with vehicles and stuff, too. So if we did delete those, I think it's 12 spaces that are parallel on De Sheca there, that's the beginning of the bike route. That also creates a pedestrian way from the 7-Eleven all the way down to the MetroLink station. It adds an awful lot of health and safety. We could do this with just painting signs at first and see if we like it. If we don't, we pull the covers off the parking meters and put it back. But I really think these, these are improvements to the area. Because, let's face it, this parking lot is going to affect the area. So anyways, I, I hope you do trim this down a little bit and maybe spend it somewhere else. I love the idea of an equipment room on an Oldie Handsome Beach house. I mean, that's the way to design it. And a bus turnout and moving the bus stop is really, really important to the community and, and to the civility down there. Pico, Pico and El Camino Real is a very dangerous place. And just De Sheca and, and Pico right there, you've got the trash can that's in the way, the bushes that are in the way, it's all blind. And we, we've got to somehow direct traffically different. So, and, and this bus turnout would be a very big bus turnout. We might even be able to get rid of the short buses that are right, right by the flower shop. And that could turn into a loading and unloading zone for, for the train stop or to grab a handful of flowers. So really, send this back to the drawing board, please. Thank you for your time. Any questions? Anything I can help with?
Thanks, George.
Thank you, Jim.
Next is Ricardo Nicole.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ricardo Nico, San Clemente. Richard in San Juan Capistrano.
Oh, you mean St. Joe's Capistrano, right? Richard in St. Joe's Capistrano?
Yeah, in St. Jo, I'm sorry, St. John's-
St. John's Capistrano. Sorry about that, yeah.
I mean, St. John's Capistrano. I do have, do you have a pointer that I can use?
Yes, it's right there.
Oh. Oh, this one. Okay. Oh, thank you very much.
Lord, does our giant iPad work there?
How do you turn it on?
Is it going to get back in commission?
Here are the things that you requested to be side by side. Well, there they are, side by side. The one on the left is the, the one, the plan you approved by RRM, you, you, I'm sorry, you rejected. You voted against the recommendation of the staff last May 7th. That's the one on the left. And for a number of reasons, which were brought by citizens like myself, Richard Price, Lancy Parketex, and others. So you asked to go for an RFP to elicit more design solutions, and you selected a consultant. And 10 months later, another consultant, different there, RRM, 10 months later, they came back with their design, and with, which is the one on the right. And it's, the pointer disappears as soon as you get into the drawing.
Very faint, very faint.
Is it there?
Yeah, it's sort of-
Oh, well, I can't see it, but, so anyway, what, the designs are identical, practically identical. So we spent time putting out an RFP, 10 months, I understand about 50,000, I don't know, 20, 30, 40, 50,000 dollars, whatever, was spent on the, on the gable engineering and, and the BGB landscape architects to come up with the same exact, exact design. I just, I just don't understand that. If we have time, if you want to answer questions to, to review why you, you rejected that plan, I'll be glad to do that.
Yeah, you got another one, Ricardo.
Yeah. Okay. Let me, let me, let me tell you what I think should happen from now on. I think this should be rejected. You should reject this plan. And this is what I think you should do. For one thing, revise and use the area to reduce the cost. Revise the design to reduce the cost. Use 60 feet for the parking instead of 85 feet. Those, both of those designs, use 85 feet for parking instead of only 60 feet that are needed for parking. This provides an additional 24 feet for, for landscaping and, and for a bus turnout if you want to. Delete the El Portal parking lot, the El Portal to the parking lot, the portal to the parking lot, and the low wall that's proposed along El Camino Real. There's a low wall there. That'll cost, they're costly, costly structures that are not necessary and actually detract and are detrimental to the project, because they block views and they detract from the historical character that's already established by the existing historical buildings there, the casino, the beach club, et cetera. Amend the consultant's contract by deleting the language. The reason this came like this is because the, the contract with the, with the designers, with the consultant contained language that limited their option. They didn't allow them to do anything but follow a prescribed, the prescribed plan, which was the one on the left. It's ridiculous to do that. Exhibit A of the, of the contract dictates the design. Give the consultant the freedom to explore alternatives and come up with a solution that is economic and sensible and meets the project's functional and aesthetic requirements as a parking area and as a gateway to the city. And last, appoint a citizens committee of two qualified persons to assist the, the planning commission in the design review of the project. So I think we should go forward, we should get the parking lot, and, but not, not that design. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricardo. Any other cards on this item?
No.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing.
I have, I have a few questions about this, primarily related to, you know, a lot of the design decisions, you know, that were made on this. I, I don't even know if, I'll just ask the question, and then you guys tell me who can answer this. You know, the point about the design limitations and what it is, it, it does look very similar. You know, was there a distillation of other concept plans, or is this basically was considered the highest, best design element, and then it was just a refine from that point? Because although, you know, there are contemplations about the turnout and about, I remember there one being kind of a, a lower, a grading almost to create a lower parking lot so you wouldn't see the cars. Was there a point where we contemplated other designs, or did we just review it and say, "This is the highest, best use, this is where we need to stick with"? I just want to know who can answer that one.
You know, in a typical project, you know, we first try to do a conceptual plan. So we have everybody's buy-in to a, because there could be many, many, many solutions to a project. You know, many concepts can, can work for a particular project. So normally, in a CIP project, we come up with a concept and get a buy-in to that concept. That's, that's sort of our, you know, first action. And once that buy-in is accomplished, then we build the preliminary design over that, where we, you know, support that conceptual design with field findings. And that's still our map, roadmap to the next stage. And after preliminary design is approved, then we have a final design, which the preliminary design is the roadmap to get to that final design. So council was presented the concept that we looked side by side in February and also in May. in May. And in both cases, that concept was supported with some additional guidelines. So when we put the RFP out and obtained the proposals, we brought that back to the council. And our agreement also showed that concept is being our roadmap to build on. So that's why you see things that are just so much the same. Otherwise, if we take this back, we will have to have a brand-new concept approved by the council. So I don't know if I answered your question, but it's sort of a building block to get us to the final design.
I think each step along the way, it was brought back to council to seek your guidance, and the guidance was incorporated into the RFP, and that's why the design came back the way it did. It was intended to mirror the concept that was approved by council. That, you know, I think that's pretty standard.
That's pretty standard, and that has been the actions in February and May. And in August of 2013, that is taking us to this point at this time.
Was there any point during the design phase where there was cost engineering incorporated? You know, there's a certain price point, you've got the Cadillac version, you have the, you know, mid-tier. What was the process that?
Process, back in February, this exact concept had a price tag that was also introduced to the, to the council. And at that time, that price tag was $698,000. And now we're in a preliminary design stage, apple-to-apple comparison, that price tag is $740,000. So we have been, you know, introducing a cost as we go in these, in these steps.
And that's the construction cost estimate?
Correct. Construction cost estimate.
Any other questions for staff members, Jim?
No questions, but just, well, I do have one question. Let me get to it first. Tom isn't here in terms of traffic and, yeah, Tom Frank? Okay, maybe Bill can answer. Yeah, my, my question was, you know, George has brought up this several times, and he brought it up back then in terms of a bus turnout. Have we really looked at that hard and what are our thoughts and conclusions as to why we didn't include that?
It is possible to install a bus stop there, a turnout if the city council wants one there. But the concept that was brought forward to the council didn't include that, and I don't believe it was requested by the council.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a-
So it wasn't included in the design.
Yeah. Paul, I'm just, you know what I'm looking for?
Yeah, well, I refresh my memory because at the time, it was not accepted, it was not in there.
Right, it was discussed, but I don't think it was ever, you know, a specific direction to include it.
Right.
Now, obviously, and I'm probably speaking out of turn here for staff, but I mean, obviously we can include it, but there would be an additional cost if you had to go back and redesign, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, I'm just trying to understand from a technical point of view, from a traffic point of view, the importance of it. Critical item or not a good one?
The adding the bus stop will reduce the number of parking available on the site. So we had the criteria is maximizing the parking because that was our goal, to add as many parking spots as we can. And that was the goal of the conceptual plan also, so that's where that's-
All right. Now, the second point I wanted to make was just one overall that, and I think it was well said here, that two reasons for this, parking and entrance into the north end of town. So I would just like to say to my fellow council members that let's not get overly aggressive in cutting the cost of this thing at the expense of having something that we can be proud of in terms of our entrance and, you know, for example, the entry portal and things of that nature. So I feel very, I feel very proud about that.
I just asked for the number for the entranceway, just in case you're interested. We're looking that up.
The number of what?
How much it costs?
Portal. Oh.
Well, could we put up the proposed sketch? I just had a question since access to the beach was one of the, it's, the plan you're asking us to approve, it's attachment three, that one, yeah. Okay, could someone help me with the lower left-hand corner? So I've arrived at North Beach and I have four kids, my lawn chairs, my beach umbrella, my cooler and everything. So the part that has the four and the 11 next to it says ADA access walk colored concrete unit pavers. How am I getting from my car to that walkway? What's going on?
You know that little swirly part there? Oh, this one here? Is this the one?
Yeah.
Let's see.
Facing you.
Sorry, I don't do this. Okay, okay, where is the?
This is not working. It doesn't work very well. You can see, it's there.
Do you want to point to this?
That point, yes, yes, sir. That is the part, that is the part that the design seems as the area where people will, will be the focal point once you park, that people will come to. And that's where the pay station is proposed to be also constructed. And from that point, there's a small sidewalk that will connect you to the crosswalk. And that's where also a bench will be provided for anyone waiting for someone or, you know, wants to pause.
Okay, the, we're really focusing on promenade, promenade-type sidewalks. The sidewalk along the southerly portion of the parking lot looks very narrow. Is that like a 36-inch or what is that?
It meets the ADA requirement and it's, it's, I'm sorry, I don't have the dimension, but it does meet ADA requirements, so I think that-
Okay.
Typically, that's four feet.
Okay, I guess what I'm, what I'm looking for assurance for is I park there with my family and then I just stampede across De Shekka. Is that how that's gonna work?
No.
Are there walls or?
You would come, you would come.
I'm looking, I pulled it up on Google, Laurie, just to, because I know there's a walkway that takes you over to the train station, but no, you're absolutely right. You just go tromping through the parking lot. There's really no other good way to do it. So I would like to go upstairs to the train station, then go down across the train station, then come back downstairs, and then walk in the parking lot anyway. So, yes, just to be clear. But there's not really a better solution than that, so.
Well, I've got a better solution, frankly. It seems that we're gonna spend, it's about one ton of money for parking we don't need. It's, let's face facts, we did parking studies, we don't need parking there until 2035. I don't, and to think that it's, this is gonna solve the parking problems in your neighborhood? Not correct. You're still gonna have parking problems in your neighborhood. Think about how often that parking lot is full down there. That would be the Fourth of July, then it's full. All right, Memorial Day, Labor Day. This is gonna be so rarely used that I think it would serve the citizens far better if it had some pavers, a few benches, and some cactus in it. And that's it. Because to spend $800,000 on a parking lot that you don't need, to me, is a terrible waste of money. We've got the parking study that says, we don't need this. And if at some point in the future, I'm completely off-base and you can't get a parking spot in this lot down here, we can build it. It's not that hard to do. But to do this now seems like a very bad idea.
Before you count it out, Laurie, I just have a question for you to Mr. Gregory's point, because I happen to agree with him on the bus turnout, but putting that aside, we discussed earlier about moving the OCTA stop from the 7-Eleven down the blockways. Have you made any ground on that? Is that something that we could do with this project?
No, it's a conversation that can be had if we have a specific request, but I also share Mr. Gregory's viewpoint that moving the, creating a bus turnout makes a lot of sense on PCH. And if, I'm reasonably comfortable that if the city came forward with that suggestion that it would be processed as a safe solution and, you know, some 20 feet moved down the street or whatever it is. So I wouldn't guess that would be an obstacle.
You know, this is the challenge, because I was, I was down there at North Beach at 10:30 last Friday morning, and I had to search for a spot. I had to search for a spot. They had a wedding going on, they had a bunch of folks in the beach trail, I had to look, I had to go up two rows, I found a spot, it wasn't that hard. But there was maybe at the most in that parking lot, about a dozen spots that were available, and I had to look around for them. Now, what, but what occurs to me, though, when I look at this, is that, you know, we're talking about right now, the beach club not being available, and the outlet mall's not being built, and 300 homes not being also developed on Marblehead, and we're also talking about a trail. I'm actually open to having this parking lot built because I feel like, Bob, to your point, hey, listen, if parking becomes a problem, we build it then. So what's the logic? What's the logic in not simply building the lot now? If the funds are going to be expended, if it's been bought for that purpose, if it's been sitting on the books for 20 years, what's the logic for not simply building the lot now and using it as needed, as needed, when there are high times, when there is a parking lot compression? Because most people don't complain about parking lot in the pier until most everyone wants to go to the pier, and then it becomes a problem. If the, if the project is on the books and we have the funds, I don't see the harm in making that expenditure funds right now, particularly in anticipation of what I believe will be a dramatic increase at all the induction of those different projects.
Well, I'll give you an analogy here. This would be like building your church so that you can seat everyone on Easter Sunday. Who does that? Nobody.
Yeah, they build overflow and they close the partitions when it's not. And beyond that, one of the things that's also limited this parking lot right now, and I'll throw this out here, is that right now, if you were to do a street fair, if you were to do a farmer's market, right, in the parking lot, you close down part of the parking lot, you create artificial shortages because you haven't allowed, you have an account for that. Meaning, if you did want to do events more in that area and use the parking supply, you're, you're diminishing the parking, available parking supply for events to make the area more vital. And so why not have something in place? And do I think it needs to be this version? I'm, actually, I'm having second thoughts about, about what we put together here, but, you know, I, the challenge is, is that, you know, we have for years, and this is why we find ourselves in the crux of the challenges with Mr. Malamute, is that for years, we've always found reasons not to build this lot, not to do these things. And, you know, I think we're finally at a tipping point where I think the residents are finally like, you know what, the change is coming, we need to take the advantage of the opportunity we've been given to do this project, it's on the books, let's get it taken care of, and then as the need arises, it will serve as an excellent overflow parking lot. But I, you know, I guess I don't see the logic in necessarily not advancing the project. If it's on the books, we're eventually are gonna allocate funds to build this.
Tim, here's, here's another piece of logic. We spend money on studies for consultants to tell us what we need. We spent a lot of money on a consultant to look at this particular parking lot in North Beach, the whole lot, and they said, we don't need any additional parking down there, the parking down there is sufficient until 2035. So I suggest we schedule this on the CIP budget for the year 2035, and I'm okay with that. But I, if we're gonna spend money on studies and consultants are gonna tell us when to do things, when we need things, I think we should listen to them occasionally.
We get all sorts of consultant reports that we-
Absolutely.
We do. We, we listen to some, we don't others, based on what we feel is the best interpretation, the highest, best interpretation of the residents. You and I have both done it at different times. And, and I agree with you that there are times where we have incredible surpluses of parking. But what we're talking about is in the times, the high times, when, you know, when, when there's a surplus of parking. It's the times when, like I witnessed when I was there this last Friday, which was the popularity of the trail exploding, a wedding over at the casino, that seemed like there were a lot of folks over there for the train stop, and I was circulating for parking, that was a Friday morning at 10:30. I, and, and it's anecdotal, but then again, every experience we have is anecdotal, right? We're all using our anecdotal experiences to come to a decision on this. But, but really, the question is, is what's the benefit of looking at a vacant lot for the next 25 years?
I'm vote, I'm voting for building this when we need it. That's all I'm voting for. When we need it, let's build it. Because there was a wedding at the casino and you had to drive around for a couple minutes to find a parking spot, to me, doesn't equate to building this.
You're right. At the same time, you driving down there on a Thursday afternoon and finding 500 spots available also isn't a reason not to build it, right? Our anecdotal experiences don't necessarily lend very well to that.
I could not agree more.
However, there are other experiences from residents who showed up here tonight who said, we need it, who live there in that area, and from people who've talked to me who said, you know what, it's an improvement that's long overdue.
I disagree.
And, and that's fair. I think, I think your point is well made, you know, and I completely understand.
I completely, I just completely disagree, that's all.
I, fair enough. But the, the one concern I have in here is that it feels like, it feels like this, this, the parking lot as it currently stands is, I see benches, you know, I see two benches next to the gateway, and I also see a bench over here in these areas. Now, generally speaking, and I, and I appreciate what, you know, you know, waiting for cars to drop off and all these, do these different things, but I really want to, I really want to be focused on the fact that ultimately, we see this, and it's, in its highest, best use, 95% of the times, is gonna be a parking lot. And, and areas to sit on a bench and contemplate, you know, the meaning of life in a parking lot, though well-intended, I think, may not be the best and highest, best use of the real estate. The one concern I have about the bus turnout is, and it was one of the biggest concerns I've mentioned, right, frankly, is we're not gonna get more real estate in the North Beach area. We're not gonna have more opportunities to acquire land in those areas. And so the land we've allocated, we need to make sure that we're using it efficiently. We don't have any bus turnouts in San Clemente I can think of along El Camino Real and the entire stretch. And so I would have a hard time allocating what would be potentially 12 to 15 parking spots along that side or reducing it, whatever there'd be, for bus turnouts when, right now, we are, you know, right now, we, we don't have those anywhere and we seem to deal with the congestion well. George, you'll have, give me a second, please, if you could, please. So I just have a hard time allocating that bus turnout because, you know, and also, I just don't know if that's what I want for a collection point for, you know, frankly, for, for folks waiting for buses is to be, you know, hanging out curbside, you know, coming into San Clemente. But I, I would really like to see, I would like to see some efficiencies gained. I think this is a really beautiful design, but I think it can be, I think we can still have a lot of the attractiveness and the function while reducing the expenses to build it. And so I, you know, I'd like to see us maybe take, you know, a sharper pencil after it and see if we can gain some efficiency on it. Obviously, I don't want an ugly piece here, but I wanna make sure that with what we've been given, with the public funds we have, and we're using it wisely.
Overall, I'm in agreement with you, except for that last part. I mean, I think we should always look for efficient ways of chopping dollars out of things, but I wanna make sure that we don't do it at the expense of the gateway coming into San Clemente. Other than that, I'm ready to roll with it.
Well, I can count, so I'm just still gonna speak my piece, though, so you guys are gonna have to listen to me talk for a couple minutes here.
I don't think we have any consensus on this at all.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, maybe I can't count. Perfect. Okay, fantastic. Well, the thing that jumps out at me is I was very excited for this project, unlike Bob, when we had a beach parking fund. And I thought this was a tremendous use for those funds. Unfortunately, one person in the audience and in our community thought that wasn't a good idea, so we no longer have that option. That being said, the developer improvement funds that we're looking at taking this from, that are allocated for the community of North Beach, I don't know that this is the highest and best use for those. So it saddens me that we're looking at taking the funds from that to build this project. I think when staff and previous council members and maybe some council members currently look at North Beach, they look at what I would call the triangle area, which is the Miramar Theater, the Old Hanson Beach Club, and the parking area as North Beach. But to me, North Beach is the community behind it, it's the residents. And if you look at that area, it's one of the most densely populated areas in our community, and it's the most underserved, I think, in terms of dollars being put into it. And so if we do go forward with this tonight, and I would hesitantly be in favor of it, I think we need direct staff to look at some options for the funds that we do have remaining in the balance to give back to the community members and look for ways that we can benefit the residents, not commercial developers, not giving it to somebody who bought the Miramar Theater and wants to do something with it. Let's give it back to the residents, because that's what it's there for.
because that's what it's there for. And if there's any way that we can replenish this fund so that we can do programs for residents, I think we, I think we need to do that, um, however that may be. So that's where I stand on this project. I think, uh, North Beach desperately needs this project for many different reasons, and Bob, I'm sorry, I disagree with you. I think once La Pata goes through, every statistic I've seen shows that the reason we did the Estrella Overpass, we increased it, was because we're going to have increased traffic on that from the La Pata Del Rio expansion. The reason we have Vista Ramos the way we do, because we're going to have increased traffic in the area. The reason we're redoing the Pico interchange is because we're going to have increased traffic. We're building an outlet mall, we're building 250 homes. All that is going to bring more people to the community, and it's going to be an increased demand for our most precious resource, which is the ocean, the beach trail, and the beach. So I see a need for this, if not now, very shortly in the future. So that's where I'm at with it.
Yeah, you, you commented about the, the money available for North Beach. Uh, it doesn't Marblehead have part, isn't Marblehead part of the, uh, deal where more dollars go into a fund for North Beach, or am I wrong on that?
Yeah, I think there's another 1.5. Is it 1.5 million for, from the, yeah, but that, but, but that money is not available until homes are actually built. I mean, it's a fut, but it is a future revenue stream.
I realize it's not available, but I just wanted to comment to Chris's point of putting more money into the community, just so that we all understand that in the next four or five years, as Marblehead gets built out there, it's going to be another million and a half there that we can start thinking about in terms of what we do in North Beach.
And, and I get that, Jim, and that money hopefully will be spent on the residents in North Beach and not commercial developers, but this money's been sitting in a fund for, Brad, how many years?
This, this fund, you're going to spend since 2005.
Since 2005, so almost 10 years this money's been sitting in a fund, waiting to be spent on the residents in North Beach who desperately need it, and it hasn't been spent. So to that effect, I'm sure that those funds will be sitting for another 10 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah. So I, I think both those funds need to be spent on the residents. And we just heard from Don Slater, who's not here anymore.
Hi.
Oh, Don Slater, who, who represents the, uh, North Beach Association, said they're in favor of this. So, um, if the residents want to see it spent this way, then I, I think it's a, an opportunity to do that. Not necessarily a great opportunity, but an opportunity nonetheless.
I'm ready to.
I'd like to weigh in.
Yeah.
Could I speak?
Yeah. And one more caveat to that. If we could seriously look at moving the bus stop, regardless of the turnout, to this location, I would be tremendously in favor of that.
Okay, so my thought process in this, first of all, I, uh, agree with the speakers that we need that bus cutaway. And, um, Tim, what makes this different than any other place on, um, Pacific Coast Highway, El Camino Real, is it's a transit node. People get off the train, and, um, they're going to rely on that bus to get them to the new jobs at Marblehead Coastal or out, you know, um, at some of our business hubs that are on the inland side. So, um, I, if the project could support it, I think that I agree with Mr. Gregory 100% on that. So that's number one. Um, and also, I think it was Ricardo, Mr. Nicole, was talking about that three-foot wall that just kind of runs along. I'm not sure what that's about, so I wouldn't mind losing that and, you know, to get the, um, bus cutaway. Uh, number two, this is an active transportation area, and the idea that we only have, um, storage for four bicycles troubles me deeply, and, um, unless that's just an icon and there's, um, anticipation of more. But I'd like to see more bike, um, racks in the project. Um, I wasn't sure, because I'm not an engineer, about Mr. Nicole's comment about, um, we could accomplish the same amount of parking at a smaller, uh, on a smaller footprint, freeing up space for landscaping, but I'd like to see that looked at, because it rings true just looking at this. And frankly, I wished this was a one-way circulation with diagonal parking only, um, based on experiences I've seen around Trader Joe's and whatnot, where people deal with, you know, small parking lots like this with big, big cars, but that's maybe a train that's left the station. Um, I can be comfortable with, um, so, some form of approval on this, with the understanding that, um, if the beach parking fund money materializes at a point in the future, this fund gets replenished and the money gets turned over to revitalizing North Beach. And I agree with, uh, Mayor Protem Ham that the differential that's in there, we should put that to work immediately. That's in that, um, whatever the differential's going to be, it should not be regarded as surplus for this project. This project is capped, and the differential, um, sidewalks, lighting, like we did in the Pier Bowl, um, there's a lot of, you know, sidewalk lighting, there's a lot of things we could do to spruce up the area.
That's the difference, just to clarify, that's the 1.2 million versus the project cost.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, um, so, so what I guess I would want further discussion on is, are we going to send this back for value engineering, assuming it's going to go forward, or are we going to approve it with some, um, direction attached?
You know, um, did you, are you all wrapped? Okay. Uh, you know, I, I would say that, um, I, I have concerns about the turnout, but I, I mean, it's worth contemplating. I, I particularly about electric cars from the studies I've read. Costco, which is one of the most progressive green companies, uh, in the country, which very early implemented electric car charging stations, ripped them all out because of non-usage, and because of the cost of constantly upgrading technology, they're having, you know, look at that. I, I, I don't see the value in a charging station at this location, and, and I'd like to see it, uh, removed. Um, I, I do think that, um, on the design element, it's very beautiful here, but I, you know, I fear that, um, you know, Ichabaris and Kalanis are, are also established uses. I'd like to see, um, strong integration between those two, you know, where the sidewalks merge, and, you know, you've got a bench up against the wall of Kalanis there, and I, I want to make sure that's part of the consideration that we're integrating with the existing uses next to it. And then also, I, I really do believe in the value engineering. Uh, you know, the one thing about the wall, Lori, that, that I liked about it was, um, you know, if you've got a lot of families coming down here parking, sometimes you've got kids that run, and, and so, you know, there, it's nice to have a little bit of separation from the PCH, uh, in that regard, but, you know, it's, if it's not an expensive design element, I, I just, I like it.
Well, well, Tim, in the wall regard, uh, Mr. Nichols' idea about lowering the parking lot some, uh, footer, two feet, uh, seemed like a good, good, uh, you know, thing to investigate anyway.
Something to look at. I just, I, I like the idea of some value engineering, a sharper pencil. Um, obviously, it does have to be, you know, a gateway feature, and it's a, it's, you know, I would like to see.
I like where you're going, but the one to two feet, it seems to me that they looked at that most recently.
Yeah, Hamdan, could I ask Hamdan to comment on that real, real quickly?
Yeah.
If, if that's okay.
Of course.
You know, we looked at some of the things that you have mentioned during preliminary design, for example, integration with the both sides. We ran into grade problems. You know, there's a huge grade difference between Kailani and the city property. And there's also ownership of certain features. For example, the wall between Kailani and the city property belongs to Kailani. And if we touch and start grading those areas, we're going to have to correct a lot of drainage on their property. So therefore, you know, we, we did meet with them, we did meet the owners of the Kailani, and, um, you know, we discussed some of the ideas with them, but, but there was no way to do any sort of a further integration without really getting on their property and doing a lot of work on their property. So, you know, they also agreed with the solution we came up with, that, that will also work for them. We looked at that side. We also looked at the other side, the Ichabari side. Um, and on that side, there is huge, um, palm trees, huge roots there, and, and there is a grade difference there, too. So we did look at what we can integrate. As far as grading the site to lower it, it's very expensive. The site currently is balanced, and it drains to the southwesterly corner, because it also helps us with the water quality features. You know, we have to have water quality features for the site. So we balanced the site as far as the grading goes, and we developed a concept for water quality where we're collecting the water toward the Sheka and then treating it before it goes back to the storm drain. So a lot of thought process went into what you see here. You know, you're not seeing the grades that we looked at. Um, so lowering the site is, is going to increase your costs, is going to cause other issues. So what I'm trying to say is, to get from that conceptual stage to this stage, we, we looked at some of the things that, some of the issues that you brought up when you looked at that conceptual plan.
Okay.
Quick question while you're here. Is, are you imagining two-way, uh, traffic flow in this?
Yes, that is
So cars can go in both directions?
And also, this layout will give us the maximum space for any sort of event, if it takes place at this plaza. That's another thing we looked at. It maximizes the space for that type of use also, if desired. So there's a lot of competing.
Okay, and that's kind of troubling to me, because this is, if we're ever going to recapture this from the beach parking fund, it can't be an event.
But, it, it
Yeah, it should be maximized.
It maximizes the parking. That is the number one criteria.
Great.
So when you talk about the bus turnout, I was just adding that as a added bonus this one provides. But we're maximizing the parking. If we add the bus stop, that will reduce number of parking. That was our number one criteria.
Even if you change to a one-way circulation flow?
It
I, it could even be diagonal. You'd lose spaces with diagonal, probably, but
You, you know, you have to give up space. You have, you have to give up space to make space on the PCH side.
Lori, I'm glad you brought up that point about circulation. I 100% agree with you. Uh, whatever we do normally with parking lot circulation, can we just do the exact opposite of that? Because we have a tremendous history of very poor parking lot circulation in this town. So to Lori's point, I think that's absolutely correct. One-way, diagonal, what do we have to do? Because that, that was one of my concerns when I looked at this. I emailed, uh, Ms. Greg earlier. I said, is, is this really going to be adequate, one in, entry, one exit, for a parking lot of this size? Because I don't want to have a Trader Joe's scenario like we have north in a town where it's difficult to get in, difficult to get out. So, yeah. So I, I would, I would agree with you, Lori, that keep down that track, because I'm in favor of that. Do we have a comment on Chris's, uh, suggestion there? I, I, you know, I, I just wondered if anybody's staff, uh, any, any comments on the one-way parking design? I see a lot of, of angst-ridden faces there about, about, you know, I think one of
I'm trying to
Yeah. So here's what, here's what I'm, I'm gathered from this here, is that, um, there isn't a lot of really unanimous thought coming from the council on this. Well, I think we, I think there's an idea we want to build.
I think there's unanimous in terms of moving forward the concept, but we all have a little different tweaks to it.
I, I think what we're looking at is an optimization process, you know. I, obviously, cost is a hubbub for me, circulation for Chris, the bus turnout for Lori. I, I think there's a few questions that still need to be answered. I wouldn't mind approving, you know, something to move forward here, but I'd like to get these questions answered before we, you know, before we finalize. Um, you know, because I, I, you know, it's measure twice, build once, although we've been measuring for 20 years. So I'd like to measure 20 times and then cut once, but, um, I, I would like to, I'd like to make sure these questions get answered before we approve and move forward, because I, I hate it when we come back to the project like, I just wish we had done this differently or this differently. So with that, does anyone have a motion, or should I take a stab at it?
Take a stab.
Wonderful. I move that we approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $835,000 to account 0370, uh, 86745300 in the Developers Improvement Fund Commercial Improvements. If the Walker versus City of San Clemente lawsuit is appealed and the city is successful, the Public Facilities Construction Fee Fund, Beach Parking Reserve will reimburse the funds advanced for final design and construction. I move that we adopt resolution 14-09 entitled resolution, City Council, City of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit 13-478 and minor cultural heritage permit 14-004, North Beach El Camino Real Beach Parking Lot, a request to consider the construction of a 33-space beach parking lot located 1832 North El Camino Real, with the additional caveat that we, um, that staff and the design staff, um, consider, um, the elements that were brought up tonight, namely, um, the value engineering, um, and not limited to, you know, the, the value engineering component, circulation questions that had been raised, as well as the possibility of integration of a, of a bus turnout. Jim, did you have anything on that?
I think it was a three key.
I think, uh, in order to do that, we need to just remove the number 33, so that way it gives the flexibility. Does that, does that encumber us by, by designating the, the total amount of spaces? Does that, does that handcuff us?
There was a lot of work done trying to maximize the utilization of the space, so that's what was done. If, if that's not the goal, then I would remove the 33.
Uh, and then I would modify under number two, the construction of a beach parking lot located at 1832 North El Camino Real, leave the space designation somewhat open based on the final, you know, designs. Value engineering, circulation, what was the third?
Bus.
Bus turnout. Bus turnout, okay. Anything else?
Any, any impacts of any of those three things as it relates to, you know, positively remanded to the, the cost?
Do, do we want to add in some?
I would add the fourth, Tim, your point about, um, the context of the neighbors, you know, the integration.
And then also with a, a second look. It sounds like the integration work has already been done, but a second look at, at integration, in particular, I think you brought the crosswalk coming across, or was that something? Integration also with the rest of the parking lot, um, even though Bob brought up any different contexts, but same thing, it was good feedback, you know. Uh, I think that's it. Anybody else?
I'll second.
That's the motion.
Before you, I have one, one change. Can we make it not to exceed 800 and, uh,
There you go.
35,000 in the motion rather than
I would amend my motion with a not to exceed amount of 130,000.
Absolutely, positively not to exceed.
Okay, so we got an amended motion with an amended second.
I like
Amber's.
I think it's incorrect and misleading.
I
Because it impacts your, your, your vote.
I, I think we have enough to consider right now, Ricardo. I, I believe that we can integrate whatever, you know, suggestions we have at that point, but we will have a final design vote on this.
Let me, let me ask you, are you voting for this design?
Uh, we are voting for, yes. We are voting for the design on the table with modifications as
Well, I, I am telling you
Ricardo
It's an important modification.
I know, Ricardo, I
This statement from the staff.
I know, I, I appreciate that. We're going to vote on the motion on the table. And then, uh, we also have this, do I need to read in this condition?
Yeah.
Okay, and then also the addition of this conditional approval is requested in the planning commission of the January 22nd, 2014 meeting. The applicant shall maintain canopy trees in a manner that provide coverage and encourage the canopy to grow to provide shade. The applicant shall not avoid pruning the trees of the plant where they do not grow into a canopy tree. Before we vote on this, did we get consensus on what Lori said about the differential, the funding to, to be looked at for being spent?
Oh, yeah, maybe that.
So you want that to be included?
We can certainly include that, but I, we have that as an understanding. We'll do that.
Okay.
But if you want to include it, that's fine.
As long as it's an understanding, but staff.
I think it has to be an understanding, because it's not agendized.
Yeah, okay, so that's good. So we do have a motion, an amended motion on table, and we have a second. Are we clear on those?
Yes.
Joanne, are we clear on that?
Yes.
Okay. So we have, we have, we have a vote. All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment.
Well, hold on one second. Yes, Bill.
With regard, if we're going to go back through and redesign this project, that's not included in the scope of work of the project. We're already past that stage. We've been, I've just asked my staff, so we, we may incur some additional costs. I just
But when we say value engineering, it's, it's, you know, I mean, we're asking you to remove, you know, I mean, the circulation.
I'm, I'm hearing about redesign as well. If we're looking at concepts of different space configurations, we're back to where we were when the project started. I just want to bring it to your attention, because I don't know
But then that's where, I don't know if you were hearing me, but that's where I have to voice my frustration. We had a very similar conversation in May with some very substantial direction, and it just kind of didn't translate into a plan. And so here we are again, kind of talking about the same things that we were talking about last May. So there, I think it, it all traces to that language of take this design that staff has and refine it, rather than what our intention in May was, was we had some substantial comments, and I think
I don't know if we, if we had total consensus, though. I, I think that's part of the issue here, is, is we'll work through it. We'll try to bring back some options, and then the council can hopefully be able to choose from those.
Yeah.
Let me think for a second. So we do still have a motion on the table and a second, but before we, we have the vote, um, because what we're effectively voting on is to because what we're effectively voting on is to contemplate changes in design, but what we just heard from staff is that the change in design might blow up the budget past what we've already said is our not to exceed number. Is that an... Paul, would that be accurate?
Yeah, in fact, I was asking staff approximately how much it would cost for potential redesign as I saw where this was going, and we don't really have an estimate of that. I...
Well, it's not the 835, it's part of the design cost, but most of the cost is for construction. We could reduce the construction down through value engineering, as you mentioned, as well. If we run into extra engineering costs, we...
Yeah, so I think you're okay to go ahead and vote.
I think we're okay.
Yep.
So, we have a motion on the table. Motion by Brown, second by Everett. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Passes 4-1 with Baker descending.
And I would also like to agendize a discussion of where that additional, those additional funds are going to be spent, since we're in a hurry to spend funds sometimes. Let's take a look at sidewalks for the residents in North Beach and see if we can come up with a plan to spend some money down there to improve the sidewalks down there. It's very expensive in some of those neighborhoods, but we've got some cash here, and let's take a look at that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I did have, I did have a conversation with a couple of council members today, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to Bill Cameron about that, but, you know, for future El, or future CIPs, we're going to try to incorporate that, so your point is well taken.
May I ask one question, follow-up, though? Timing. What's the timing?
Bill or Hamdan, timing for coming back?
First of all, based on your guidelines, we have the scope, what is the services we want from the engineer? We have to have him give us a proposal and authorize him to do the work. So, depending on, what I heard is you would like to see another concept with a bus stop is one of the comments in summary I heard. The other one I heard is the circulation. By circulation, do you mean, what do you mean? Do you mean several entrance points to the, you know, what is your intent or what do you want us to look at under circulation?
The simplest, like, the simplest way, I think, is just do the opposite of what we normally do.
Well, you know... The objective, which, one of our primary objectives back in May was safety.
Yes.
And, you know, we've gotten a little bit of pushback on the new Ralphs, and we've gotten a consistent pushback on Trader Joe's, and so this is going to be a city-controlled project. So, entrances is something to look at, traffic flow is something to look at, whether you've got perpendicular or diagonal parking is something to look at, signage might be something to look at. But the object of the exercise is safety to avoid impacts in what's going to be probably a very family-friendly...
I think to be just objective in it, to be honest, I'm not an expert. I think the staff is obviously not best suited to handle it, so maybe we just ask the designer to design something.
I guess what I'm saying is we wouldn't bring a design here from engineering standard point of view that it wasn't safe, if it wasn't safe. You know, it meets our current standards, so when you say safety, we want safety or circulation improvements. I'd like to know what it is in design that, you know, doesn't meet the safety criteria because the design we have done, it meets the engineering standards. It is a safe design. So, when you define a, we would like you to look at a safety or circulation. If you give us more direction, what it is, is it, do you want two entry points? Is it the part that, you know, what is it that will help us to define a scope and bring a concept? Otherwise, we're going to keep paying development of a concept after concept until we have a consensus. So, truthfully, I'd like to get more clear direction to what it is that doesn't meet the circulation or safety criterias that are being talked about. I'm very clear about the bus stop turnout question, you know, that alternative, how that would impact the design. Yes, you know, we can take a look at that because it is not available. But as far as some other concepts that are being mentioned, I'm not sure what is it in this design that you're unhappy with that doesn't meet your standards.
I think the one way would be a start. I think that's a good start.
Wait, wait, we have an expert here. We would like to have you give us your best idea of how to do that parking lot. That's what I would like to see. I would like to have you tell me how to do it. That's what I would like.
This is the design that has been developed that is meeting the engineering standards, so...
Could I...
That's the part.
Could I kind of interrupt? Because, so we don't go through this iteration again and again and again. Here's what I'd like to suggest. Number one, I think we really understand what value engineering is.
That's clear.
We clearly understand what the bus turnout could be. We talked a little bit about the context of integration, but I'd look at it more from your perspective. And I think what Bob is saying even on the circulation is, what are your thoughts? Are there things that we could do better? And the one main suggestion I've heard on circulation is one-way circulation as opposed to two-way circulation. So, what I would suggest that staff does, so that we don't spend a lot more money on this, is why can't staff just get together, brainstorm on these, and write a short white paper, a couple pages on each one of these four things in terms of the pluses and minuses, both in terms of losing spots, doesn't have to be exact, in terms of losing spots, in terms of potential additional costs, without getting into any big design, and bring that back, and then let us decide from a conceptual point of view whether we feel we should go forward with any of those things in terms of integrating it into a more grandiose design? Because I don't think we want to go out, and I get the feeling that some people think that maybe we're asking to go out and, okay, give us a design. Here's one design without the bus, here's one with, and here's all the details about it. I think we just need some high-level feel for what that means so we can make a decision. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think you're right. We don't want to incur thousands of additional dollars to, you know, do these, you know, look at it. But to Chris's point, if you drive Trader Joe's, what we want is the certainty. We want the strong feeling that when this gets built, we're not going to end up thinking, "I'm in the Trader Joe's parking lot. This is hell on earth, and I feel like driving my car into a wall as opposed to circulating this parking lot anymore." That's what we want to be sure of because what it feels like and it looks like is very similar to some of the challenges we've had in Ralphs and some of the challenges we've had in Trader Joe's. One-way in and out, excuse me, two-way, a straight lineup, in and out, heavy circulation, you know, and that's why each of us, we're a little bit gun-shy because of that. We've had, we get, we get the resident complaints. When people are mad about the parking, we're the ones who get shot, right? And so, that's what, we would like to get the certainty that the circulation that you are contemplating on this will make sure that we don't have that experience in this parking lot, or if it's even close to that, or if there's a way of improving it, that's what we'd like to know. I don't want you to go spend $20,000 on drawings. I just say, is there a better way? And if there's a better way, tell us what that better way is. Does that seem clear?
That's clear.
Okay.
That's looking...
Thanks for taking that, Tim.
...right there that tells you exactly what you're asking for.
And Ricardo, we will include that. I mean, we're going to, there's still a little bit of a conversation to have here, okay? So, with that, I think we can go to break. And we'll take five minutes, folks. Come on back at nine o'clock, so we keep going.
All right, let's get going.
Next item is report from the Assistant City Manager concerning the possibility of transitioning the city's pension plan from Great West Pension Services to CalPERS.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you tonight, we have a recommendation to approve an amendment to our existing CalPERS contract. And I'll back up a little bit. Our current CalPERS contract is both for marine lifeguards, and then we have the public safety plan that are consisting of retirees from both the police department and the fire department before we went with the county. I'm going to go through a little bit of a background, very briefly. I also want to point out that we have an actuarial from CalPERS here, as well as an actuarial from Bartell &amp; Associates who assisted the city in doing our evaluation study as well.
I wondered who those long-suffering souls were, sitting in the audience so patiently.
One of them has already missed their plane. We promised he's not going to miss his plane tomorrow morning.
I think that gives us a goal to shoot for. All right, Eric, speak slowly. Let's go.
So we've always looked, over the years, at doing valuations to see if it's cost-effective for us to transition from our Great West Pension Plan to CalPERS. In late 2013, we had done a valuation, and at that time, when we looked at the numbers, they provided a really opportunistic time, from a cost-saving standpoint, to transition to a CalPERS account. I mentioned in the fiscal impact that we -- potential cost savings of approximately about $178,000 in savings to the city by transitioning to CalPERS. Some things that I want to point out that are very clear, and we've communicated to the employees: It is like-for-like. There are no changes to their existing plan with Great West by going to CalPERS. Everything remains the same: their contributions, what they potentially would get out, everything. Speaking specifically, if I have a three-year vested with the City of San Clemente, and I go into CalPERS, I maintain that. Nothing changes. We've done a lot of due diligence, both internally with FAS, with our City Manager Paul, as well as utilizing Bartell &amp; Associates to review our study, as well as CalPERS reviewing their information. And so everything pencils out correctly. We've done due diligence with the employees, in terms of not only meeting with all of, I'll say, the bargaining groups, both hourly, confidential, and management, to explain to them the possibility of transition. And we brought Bartell &amp; Associates to all of those meetings to communicate the valuation process, et cetera. Then we also conducted workshops with CalPERS, who flew in an individual, Judy Collins, to do specific overview and presentation of the benefits associated to CalPERS. Going back to why we've been looking at this, is we're trying to get out of the pension business. We have to deal with controlling the knobs for investment currently under Great West. While we've done very well under Paul's tutelage, that's one control that would be given up going to CalPERS, and CalPERS having a much larger portfolio of about, if I think correctly, about $384 billion. $284 billion, I apologize. The return potential with CalPERS is far greater, I shouldn't say far greater, is better than what we can get with our current one. And I'll speak to the 10-year average that we have seen with 2003 to 2013 with CalPERS. The net rate of return is about 9.2%, whereas our plan with Great West yielded about 8.79%. So we have, we will see a difference in net return, and I'll let Carrie from CalPERS speak to that, if you have questions more with regards to that. One change that we are doing is we have 17 benefited part-time employees who work more than 1,000 hours, and they receive benefits. We are actually including them in the amendment to go to CalPERS. CalPERS requires employees to work less than 1,000 hours to not be PERS-eligible. These 17 individuals work 1,200, 1,300 hours a year, which would be a significant impact to the city from a service-level standpoint. So we're including those in the transition. However, as the staff report indicates, as those positions become vacant, we can reevaluate the position to see if it can be a part-time position under 1,000 hours, or we can go to full-time, or we can leave it as it is.
Are those golf course employees, or are they scattered throughout the system?
They're scattered throughout the city. The majority of them are in BPR, and I think there might be one in golf, but I don't think there's one in golf, but the majority are in Parks and Rec and a couple of other locations. Now granted, all of our unbenefited part-time will have to work less than 1,000 hours as well, so that they're not PERS-eligible, which is a very common practice with almost every California agency that has PERS. Looking at my notes, some of the major benefits going to CalPERS, as I talked about, was the portfolio of $284 billion, but there's also a significant level of customer service that we acquire with going to CalPERS. They have local offices in California, close to Angel Stadium, and in San Diego. They hold numerous educational seminars for employees on retirement planning. Their website is very robust. They have a web that's called MyCalPERS, where you can go in and you can do retirement calculators, and look at additional scenarios, and get real numbers based on your account. Great West has been a great plan for us, and has worked, but they are located in the East Coast, and they are a private-sector company that I would say does not specialize in California Pension Plan. They've done a great job, but we really feel, with all of the complex laws related to California and the pension, most recently with Pepper that was passed, we need a California expert that maintains our plan, and PERS is that one. This approval tonight is the intent to move to CalPERS. The next step would require the employees to vote. There's two steps to that process. The first vote is all employees currently covered with Great West. That vote requires a 2/3 majority for it to pass. The second vote is for all those going into CalPERS. So those 17 additional benefited part-time would participate in that vote. If either one does not pass, we stop, and we're done, and it doesn't move forward, and we stay with Great West. Obviously, if both of them do pass, we would then begin the transition to CalPERS, which we would anticipate probably a mid-June live date going to CalPERS. A number of the costs associated to Great West that we currently incur would go away, or diminish significantly with regards to the WERCEs that we use for their overview of our pension fund, and there's some admin costs associated with Great West that would be reduced. I do want to note, employees that have retired, or employees that have worked for the city but no longer work here, they both would remain in Great West. So over the course of X amount of years, that participant group would get smaller, and smaller, and smaller, so that eventually would diminish, but we would maintain the Great West plan for those participants with that. So there would only be active employees going into CalPERS, the council, and the employees were to approve it.
And quickly, Eric, how many existing retirees and prior employees would be in the Great West plan next week?
I'm going to...
Approximately 20, 200?
I saw the number last week, and I believe, and don't quote me on this, but I think it was 88.
So in the staff report, I stand ready to answer any questions. We've laid out a number of pros, we've laid out a number of cons, and like I said, we have both actuarials from CalPERS and Bartell to address any questions you may have with regards to the numbers as well.
If I could just jump in, just to reiterate a couple of things. One is in my defense, because we talked about the net rate of return, so I just kind of wanted to address that, you know, kind of putting back my treasurer hat, et cetera. But, you know, we have managed this portfolio for a number of years, and actually, the gross rate of return would be closer to what PERS has gotten over the years, and I don't think it's any secret, on PERS' part certainly, is that in a down market, you know, we've done a little bit better, just because we've had, you know, probably a little bit different kind of diversification, et cetera. But the key here is, and the key is, is that the cost, the administrative cost of us administering our own, what I would call sort of a boutique plan, is quite costly. It gets spread, you know, by going into the bigger system, and kind of taking care of all the administrative expenses, a lot of the costs go away, which certainly helps our rate of return. The second one that I wanted to address, and I don't think I may have missed it, but one of the things that I've actually been doing since the day I walked in the door almost, probably the first or second week, is actually, when I first got here, it was very odd to me that we would be in our, a plan, a private plan, versus a PERS-type plan, or somebody else administering it, that it was actually somebody that was managing it. At the time, I think it was MetLife, New England Life, back in Boston, and it was just something that was kind of common back in the '70s, where you hired insurance companies to manage your pension plans. So, and I don't really know exactly why the city went that way, but they did. So I actually started working on a plan to exit that, the plan that we had with MetLife, and was unable to do so, because we were locked into a contract, and they would not allow us to get out of the contract without paying them $500,000 at the time. Half a million dollars was a big portion of the portfolio at the time, because the portfolio in 1992 was about $3 million. So we started kind of negotiating our way out of that contract, and ultimately, we were able to do so, and exit the plan, which took about 10 years. At that time, then we started actually asking for a valuation of CalPERS, and I don't know how many exactly, how many times we've done that, but we've done it a bunch of times over the years. And each time, it's always come in where, by going from Great West to CalPERS, it was going to cost us, in the neighborhood, I think the last one was like $300,000. It was always going to be quite costly to move over. And then, a bunch of assumptions have now changed, and if you have any questions on that, I know the actuary is going to answer this a lot better than I can, but, you know, something, you know, it all changed, and this last valuation actually came in pretty close to break even, and then we detected there was one benefit that was actually included that wasn't supposed to be included. We had them back that out, and it became a savings of about $178,000. So, but I did kind of want to say that, because it did come up in the employee meetings. It's like, why now? Why, all of a sudden, are we trying to get into PERS? We've actually been trying to get into PERS for over 22 years, and now it finally worked. So I, and I will say, just right up front, that I, and I've talked to each individual council member about this, and I've told the employees that I'm very much a supporter of this. I think for the long term, this is the best course of action, I think the most cost-effective way, and, you know, I wish we could have done this a long time ago.
And just to revisit Councilmember Doncheck's question, the actual number is 98 inactive employees and 105 retirees.
And what's the timeline on that? Five years, 10 years? When do you think the relationship with Great West would ultimately wind down?
What? I had the conference last week.
Now we're talking depth.
Yeah, I had a conference, I guess, so I don't want to be too...
Well, how big is that pool going to be?
Well, there's an actuary right there, I'm sure he can run it.
We, that'll be something that we'll be finalizing, in terms of how much money we leave with Great West, and how much money we go to CalPERS.
Okay, so you'll figure that out.
So we're going to figure that out, because we want to make sure we divers it appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Laurie, I can call George Scarborough up and ask him when he's planning on dying, if you want me to hit those numbers for you.
I think men are living until 85 now, that's the newest assumption.
Hey, just like Laurie, my biggest concern is the retirees also. So I was looking at this here, it says $48 million is in our investment portfolio. How much of that is going to be left in its current account, and how much of that's going to be transferred over to CalPERS?
Roughly, I would probably say, we were using the number of $26 million staying for the retirees and the inactives, and the balance going to CalPERS. Flip it around, excuse me. $26 million going, $27 million going to CalPERS, and the balance of that 48 staying with Great West. But again, we're going to be very, very diligent when we get ready to pull the trigger, so to speak, to look at those numbers and make sure that they're allocated appropriately.
And then, what happens to that $21 million if it, let's say it's not sufficient, or, yeah, let's just say that $21 million isn't sufficient for...
And what I want to say is, I think, you know, we need to do our due diligence to make sure the amount we put in there is sufficient. It's a little bit easier, and I'm going to look to Mary Beth from Bartell, it's a little bit easier when you know your pool, you have defined people that are retiring, you have this variable with inactives that are maybe still 15 years out from retiring, but I want to say it's a little bit easier to manage that than it is all employees, because then there's a little bit more of a variable with that. So I think we'll be able to get our arms around that, and we will have to do valuation studies every couple of years, to make sure we're looking at it, and we have the Pension Investment Committee that will still oversee that plan, and be working to ensure that there's enough money there. So what I would say, my...
There's an ongoing contribution.
Correct, but...
It's not just stay, $21 million, it just stays.
Our hopes are that we are going to project it correctly, so we can allocate that throughout the term of that plan.
Yeah, there's a total that will, a portion of the dollars will go to CalPERS, and a portion will go to Great West, and, but the rate overall should, you know, won't be any greater now. I mean, obviously, you do evaluation every year, it really isn't going to make, I don't think, and I'm probably speaking more of Bartell &amp; Associates, but it really isn't going to, it shouldn't make a lot of difference, as, you know, the rates aren't going to go up just because we've got money in Great West. In other words, the rate should stay about the same, and go up for other variables, of course, or down.
And so we're going to leave 200 individuals with Bartell, and how many are going to be transferring over to CalPERS if it does go forward?
200 individuals with Great West.
Great West, okay.
And then the balance of active employees, which I want to say is closer to about 185 active employees.
Yeah, Eric, I'd like to have just a, just a one-minute batch of details on what the difference is. What made it such a good idea to go to CalPERS now?
Number one was the cost. There was a cost savings to be attributed.
And why didn't we have that cost savings in years past?
You want to let the actuaries...
Yeah, I may, they've been here all night, so let them.
I'm Mary Beth Rudding from Bartell Associates. I can't, I can't answer that exactly, because we have not, like, replicated the valuations that CalPERS has done, or Great West did, but we know that the two actuaries use different assumptions and different methodology, and for whatever reason, in the past, most likely the assumed rate of return, CalPERS would have requested a larger annual contribution from you than Great West said it did. The benefits provided in both cases were exactly the same, so in the long run, the plans should have cost the same if the investments earned the same amount of money. But, but just because of the timing, probably, and assumptions, it was costing more in the short run to go to CalPERS. He still looks confused.
Yeah, yeah. Are you saying that the assumptions, you know, all these pension plans have assumptions on the rate of return? So if Great West is using seven and a quarter, and CalPERS is using seven and a half, then to go into CalPERS, you would have to make up the difference with cash?
Actually, the other way around.
Reverse.
So since their, CalPERS is assuming their money is going to earn more interest, you don't have to put so much in, because the money's going to earn more. don't have to put so much in, because the money's gonna earn more.
Okay, in the years past, those rates of return assumptions were reversed?
I believe so.
They were not reversed.
They were.
Because PERS had been seven and three quarters, and we had been seven and a quarter.
Yeah, and then they lowered, they lowered theirs down to seven and five, and I think there's other variables also in there, I mean, there's a bunch of variables, it's how they amortize the unfunded, the unfunded losses.
Different liability.
Different liabilities, there was just a whole bunch of different variables that the numbers all worked out, so in our favor.
Mortality tables, so, you know, without spending a lot of money, we can't tell you exactly why this happened.
We're confident that you've done that already.
And I might, and I might say, by the way, just real quickly, that Bartell and Associates is our independent actuary, you know, that we, we retain them, but as our independent actuary, and then, of course, CalPERS is the, CalPERS actuary, just specify the difference.
So the difference is accounted just the actuarial assumptions that are built into the plans have adjusted, so that created the difference?
That's, that's what we think happened.
It got closer and closer together.
I do have one question.
We...
I got a couple more, sorry. One of the things we read about occasionally is PERS' large losses in down markets. Has PERS changed some of their investment ideas to mitigate that?
Hello, I'm Kerry Worgen, CalPERS actuary. That's a good question, I mean, back in '08, '09, PERS lost 24%, but most investment managers at the time were losing in the 24, 25, 28% in that year. We annually review allocation of portfolio, we are currently actually, through our chief actuary, looking to de-risk a little bit, take out some of the risk of the portfolio, which is, will reduce some of the volatility, obviously, going forward. But like any investment market, we can't, we don't have that crystal ball that says we're gonna earn whatever each year. We do believe, however, for the next 30, 40, 50 years that you run this plan, that seven and a half percent is a reasonable assumption, and that's what we base our future returns off. To say that seven and a quarter versus seven and a half, which is what Great West is assuming, maybe economies of scale, we have a much larger fund, much more private equity component built into our portfolio, which will tend to generate a slightly better return long term, although there is some trade-off and some risk. So there will be years, I can guarantee you, where there is negative return going forward, but we assume, you know, two-thirds of the time, there's gonna be positive returns, and that over time, seven and a half percent is reasonable going forward.
Like we all do. And I'm not certain exactly how the employee pensions work, but they, they don't have any relationship to the market valuations of the entire portfolio, do they? I mean, an employee retires after so many years with a certain benefit, it's not, there's no, there's no correlation between the stock market, so if they were to retire in a down year, okay, good.
So you refer to as a defined benefit?
Defined benefit plan.
The specific, it's a, yeah, based on a formula, and that's the formula that they'll give, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And going, you know, kinda going to that, you know, last year, PERS, in 2012, their, CalPERS made 13.3%, 2013, 16.2%. So, and, but as they said, you know, that could go down the other way, and it has in prior years, and it fluctuates greatly, so.
So part of the cost analysis was, we would save some fees on, on Great West, but it sounds as if we're still maintaining a balance, is it only the...
It shrinks.
It shrinks, then, based on how much we have with them?
I anticipate a significant reduction to those costs that we are currently bearing, based on a smaller portfolio, and every year theoretically, as things change within the plan, maybe it gets a little bit smaller, a little bit smaller, but a number of the fees that we're currently getting will get reduced.
And what's the transition timeline? Let's say that the employees vote, yes, this is what we wanna do, how soon is it that we would be implementing this change?
Potentially in the middle of June.
Okay, so only a few months on.
I had a question, just wanna make sure I'm doing this right, page 9A11, unfunded liabilities, okay, so at our last financial planning meeting, I thought the Great West program had an unfunded liability of about 22%, is that right? Roughly 20, 21, 22? Judy's nodding her head, okay. So if, apples to apples, if I'm looking at page 9A11...
Actually, 32, 32, because we were funding about 68%, so 32.
32, so, okay, 32.
72.
Unfunded, the unfunded piece.
Yeah, but 70...
72% funded.
So 28%.
Yeah, not 32.
Correct.
28.
And our unfunded liability was about 16 million, give or take.
So 28%, we all agree, okay. So now I'm looking at this chart, the CalPERS, is it apples to apples to say that their unfunded accrued liability is 16%? I took the 7.8 million as a percentage of the 48.8 at the top, is that how you do that?
You're looking at the 7.8 million?
Yeah, against the 48.8 at the present value of the benefits. Is that how you do that? What I wanna know is what's their unfunded liability, and on apples-to-apples basis versus what we saw in our finance meeting recently?
When we did our allocation of assets coming across, we used the same proportion that's in your Great West life plan.
So 28%?
So it would be, say, yeah, the same 20, so 72% funded as well.
Is this the right chart to be looking at to see, ah, it's 72% funded?
Yeah, you would take the liability of 34.7 million, and our assets were assuming is 26.9, so the funded ratio would be the 26.9 to about 34.7.
I see, okay, got it.
Good question.
Okay, thank you. I'm ready to move on to accounting 101.
Yes, you just passed. Sir, if there's any questions, I stand ready to answer.
Yes.
If I have any questions.
And to be clear, the employees have the final say in this.
That is correct, you're just approving the intent.
Gotcha.
They are the ones that say they want to or don't want to.
Change.
Change. And that's, I will point out really quick, that's one thing that I have learned a little bit through this process, is CalPERS is an employee-centric company. So their focus is the employee first, so that's important, because as an employee in that plan, you wanna make sure that the people that are administering your plan have your needs and mine, and we've seen that since day one, working with CalPERS, that, you know, there's certain things that they won't do, because that's not how they do things, they are employee-centric, focusing on the employees' benefits.
And you will be a member, you will be a member, you will be a member, you'll be a member, you'll be a member, and you'll be a member.
Hold on, we, we, I think we do over 1,000 hours a year, do we get put into PERS as well?
No.
Those hours.
Just to tell the public that the City Council does not draw, I just gotta be really...
I guess that's the way it works.
I'm really sensitive to it.
Yeah, no, no, I can do, yeah.
Okay, so I move that we adopt Resolution 14-10, entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, of intention to approve an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System and the City Council of the City of San Clemente, and that we also introduce Ordinance Number 1578, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of San Clemente and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System."
I'll second. Motion by Doncheck, second by Baker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Passes 5-0, thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for sticking it out with us.
Good report.
Next is a report from the Beaches Parks and Recreation Director concerning a city-initiated proposal to amend the code of the City of San Clemente to modify the definition of smoking to include electronic cigarettes and marijuana.
Can I make a motion?
I like that thought process, that's good.
Before you start your staff report, I'd like to call everyone's attention to Pam Passau's wonderful Western City article on Fun on the Run, so be sure you read your... Yeah, very nice.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it is the Fun on the Run fitness, and the fact that our city won the 2013 Helen Putnam Award for Excellence in the Health and Wellness Programs category for this project, and Pam Passau and our great city manager, Paul Gagers, are mentioned.
My name in there?
Yeah.
I made you sound good.
Well, thank you both for making the city look good.
No, thank you very much. Okay, so on to other fun things. So, with the, with the technology of, with the addition of new smoking technology, there's this new fad of e-cigarettes, and we wanted to really look into what does this mean to the San Clemente community. So we are, we came to the City Council in 2011, we expanded the smoking ban to include the public parks, and earlier this year, actually a couple weeks ago, we went to the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission with the idea of changing the definition of smoking to include e-cigarettes and marijuana. And the FDA right now, just for a little education on the e-cigarettes, they, the FDA does not currently monitor e-cigarettes, and so there is, the components of the e-cigarettes varies between manufacturers and vendors, and so what the, the background of that is that there could be lots of different things inside the e-cigarettes, and many of the components that have been found in the e-cigarettes are the same that are in aerosol, which is, could include all these fun things that are in your report, I don't wanna say them, because I will not pronounce them correctly, but those are part of the California's Proposition 65, which all of you have seen at different places, where they'll have the California Proposition 65 notice, which are items that could cause cancer. And if you look on any of the vaping industry's websites and go to their stores, there's actually warnings that say that these, these products are not good for you, and that they could cause cancer and things like that. Now, one of the big arguments to have the e-cigarettes is that this could be a deterrent for regular smoking and things like that. The problem is that there is not enough research that has been done to say that if that is a good smoking cessation, it may or may not be, but what we would like to be able to talk to you about tonight is that there is something that comes out of the e-cigarettes when somebody is smoking them. So it's not necessarily a typical smoke that would be coming out of a cigarette, it's more of a vapor, but there is something that is in there. So they've done some studies on this, and the initial studies have shown that there is something, there is nicotine, and there's also some of these other components that were mentioned earlier. And so what we are looking to see is, is not to have them in the public spaces, we're not saying that we would ban e-cigarettes from the City of San Clemente, what we're saying is that we would recommend banning the e-cigarettes in the public spaces that the council has already approved banning smoking, so just expand that definition of smoking, so that would include the public parks, the trails, any of those spaces that we've already approved. The other thing is that marijuana, right now, if it's smoked in the typical fashion, that is outlawed in any place that smoking is already banned. Now, with the new technology, marijuana can also be found in those e-cigarettes, and so there are cartridges that they can put in, or there are liquid form that can be put into these electronic devices. And with the increase of marijuana use in California with a medical marijuana card, we have seen an increase in California of marijuana smoking. And we're not saying that that shouldn't be allowed in San Clemente again, what we are proposing is to ban the marijuana smoking in our public spaces where it's in the, in the same form. Marijuana smoking right now is not allowed in the places, in the typical fashion of marijuana smoking, is not allowed currently in those public spaces, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. So with that, the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission has already approved this 7-0 unanimously. So the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission and staff recommend that the City Council introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending Chapter 8.64 of the San Clemente Municipal Code, amending 8.64.020 definitions." I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Pam, we're in the ordinance of the state, every single area where smoking would not be allowed, because I didn't see that.
It's not in there, because this is just changing the definition of smoking, so that would include all of the spaces that it already is not allowed in.
Okay, can you, can you list those out for me?
Yes, I can. And so this would be elevators where smoking is already prohibited, hospitals and healthcare facilities, meeting rooms, public restrooms, eating establishments, employer compliance, which is the same thing that we have now with smoking, a sign requirement that there would be no smoking, so the same signs that we have now would still be the same signs, beaches, designated coastal canyons, designated inland canyons, public trails, and public parks.
Yeah, and we're doing this, why? Because of the harmful effects of the vapors given off by these?
That is correct.
I did some tiny little Google research, and I didn't find anything like that, the thing I read, Laura, would you put that up on the screen for me? The thing that I read said that the jury's still out on that, and that nobody knows whether there's harmful effects from that stuff or not. And frankly, the part about cigarettes that I hate are 10 zillion cigarette butts, so if we can get somebody to stop throwing cigarette butts all over the place and carry one of these things around with them, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but I don't, I don't know. The, right here, are they safer, and this is from, what website is this, Laura, I've forgotten, is this WebMD, WebMD? Researching to the effects of e-cigarettes lag behind their popularity, but, well, right there, nobody knows yet whether they're safer than tobacco. Scroll down, won't you please? Nicotine's addictive, but, you know, they're, part of the draw for these kind of things is that people can select less nicotine than it gets from cigarettes, so, I mean, these, we don't know anything about these. We're banning something we don't, we don't know anything about, we don't know whether, maybe this has beneficial effects for people. The, the jury is still out on this, I don't, I don't think we should ban things that are not, that we don't know anything about. I mean, shouldn't we have a study that says that these things are, it would seem to me that we should have a study that says these things are harmful, like we know about cigarettes, we've been doing studies for 50 years about cigarettes, and people are still smoking, but shouldn't we know these are, this is something harmful before we ban it? It seems illogical to me to ban something that's not proven harmful yet.
Well, there are some studies that they have done, and I wish that we could go forward 50 years, and then we would know for sure all of the effects that e-cigarettes have, but we don't have that type of history, because they haven't been around for 50 years. But the, the research that I have done, and I have done extensive research as well, Wolfgang Schuber did a study on the e-cigarettes to find out what is the effects of the second-hand, and this isn't the initial, e-cigarettes are not good for you, but what I'm talking about is the second-hand smoke, the second-hand vapors, of whether or not this would be, and what they did find is that there is residue, that there is the air around the person who was smoking, it did, the, the levels were, let me read it, I'm not saying this very well right now, is, "Their data confirms that e-cigarettes are not emission-free, and their pollutants could be of health concern for users and second-hand smokers, in particular, ultrafine particles formed from supersaturated," now, I don't know how to say this word very well, so bear with me, "propofenidial vapor can be deposited in the lung and aerosolized." These are not easy words. "Nicotine seems capable of increasing the release of inflammatory signaling molecule no upon inhalation."
Pam, maybe I'm not making my point, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree that these things may be harmful, but may and could, and things like that in a study are the things that I don't agree with. You may, your investment portfolio may have, may go up during, it may not, I mean, but when people say, "We still don't know enough about their long-term risks or effects of second-hand exposure," those are the kind of things that I, I try to focus on. When they say it may do something, or it could do something, I, you know, it may or could not do something, so, anyway, I, I think this is way too much government for me.
Let me just add a comment, kinda like...
let it out there until we do know. So I would rather not allow something that we don't know enough about.
I got a smoking buddy that loves this kind of stuff, and he thinks it's helping him tremendously because his nicotine consumption is way down. So, and, you know, did I say a smoking buddy? I mean, a golfing buddy who smokes, that's what I meant to say. Anyway, but, yeah, well, and the marijuana thing, oh my goodness, I can't. But anyway, he thinks it's helped him tremendously to curb his nicotine use. And, and, you know, I, I think we should kind of encourage things like that.
I'll make the motion. I mean, this, this is a very easy vote, very easy to support.
I, I, I don't, I don't.
Do you have comments you want to make?
Yeah, I got comments. So first off, Bob, I think you made, brought some very good points. I see this as a tremendous alternative to regular smoking, and I think that people are making the choice actively in doing this because you do see less people smoking cigarettes in public spaces. I do also have friends that utilize these, and I've been on the golf course with them, sitting in a golf cart, and I don't recognize the effects of secondhand smoke when they're smoking these as compared to a regular cigarette. So I will support Bob in not being in favor of this ordinance. But that being said, is it currently legal to smoke crack cocaine in city parks and beaches? Because I noticed that was in here.
No.
I got a chuckle out of that.
No, but...
That's already in the ordinance, right?
That is an ordinance, but here's, here's the, the reason that this is in there is that with the advances of the e-cigarettes, there could be crack cocaine in what you think someone is just smoking an e-cigarette. There could be marijuana in that e-cigarette, and law enforcement doesn't know whether or not it is marijuana or tobacco or nicotine.
Well, I think that's a little overreaching to give law enforcement an excuse to harass people that just are smoking e-cigarettes on a trail because it potentially could be a crack cocaine. So I don't think I'd support that either, but that's just me. You know, I, this is, this is an interesting conversation because I don't have any smoking buddies, Bob. But one of, but one of the interesting, one of the interesting things about this conversation is, is that, you know, it's the type of thing that, you know, obviously, I have deep concerns. You know, I have concerns about marijuana. I think it's very obvious that that fits within the categories of what we've currently done with our bans on cigarettes. Make no mistake about it, I think the bans on cigarettes have a lot to do with the fact they leave so many butts on our beaches. Almost as much as the secondhand smoke was the waste byproduct was, I remember, as part of the consideration that was the case. But when I look at this and I see something like, well, you know, e-cigarettes, something the FDA is looking into, that it has bad things in it, frankly, a lot of things have bad things in it. But the problem where it loses me on this, and believe me, I'm no fan of smoking in any form, particularly e-cigarettes, is that, is that if people choose to engage in this behavior, and the health hazards have not been proven, right, have not been proven scientifically to have an effect in public areas, which is where we're banning them, then why would we take a proactive stance to limit how people choose to engage in this activity when we don't have substantial scientific evidence that that activity hurts anyone else around them? Meaning, if, if a person wants to choose to smoke an e-cigarette, and that does not imperil the health of anyone around it, and it doesn't create a waste byproduct, and frankly, it helps them get off of maybe regular cigarettes or it's a habit that they're using, I have a hard time saying, as, as, you know, and this is, this is, is, is a member of the city council saying, "Well, we feel like there's a chance it could be bad, so we're just going to remove that option from you in a public place." I, I, I can't support that. I can't support the idea that, that we feel concern that can't be substantiated, and yet we feel comfortable saying, putting the ban on the books. Because it just, it's, it's, it's a bridge too far. It's a, it's a liberty that people should have the ability to be able to do these things, especially if it doesn't shown, proven that it harms other people. I won't take that same step on marijuana. I just, I do feel like, of course, I would support a ban on marijuana in public spaces, but I don't, I don't think I could do that with these cigarettes. And, and so, anyway, I, I think that this is, you know, from, from my part, I'd like to not to overreach on this item and wait until the science comes out. And if the FDA does make a definitive statement about secondhand smoke, particularly in public areas, then, then we can take a look at it then. But until the science is proven on this, then I'd hate to lump e-cigarettes in with cigarettes and marijuana without properly considering those items.
Okay, then I'm going to have to be the voice for the children here, and I'm going to put my schoolteacher hat on. This ordinance says, "Smoking in public parks endangers children and others by exposing them to secondhand smoke. Moreover, children and youth who observe smoking and tobacco use in public parks may model the behavior." It's, if you are an eight-year-old, you don't distinguish between the Marlboro and the e-cigarette. It's just somebody's, you know, having a smoke. And so the intention here is that that industry has changed and redefined itself, and I feel we have an obligation to the future generation to make sure that we keep up with the times. So I'm, I'm amazed this is going to fail.
Laurie, I would completely agree with you, except for the fact it says right here, "may model the behavior." I think it's the responsibility of parents and teachers to educate the children on the dangers of smoking. And to your point, they may...
And not the city leaders, not the city leaders. We don't need to teach them anything. That's what you're saying here.
I think, no, it's the responsibility of parents first, teachers second, and we're distant third. I think you have coaches, you have mentors, you have tons of people between us, the city council, and the children of the next generation.
I think where we diverge on that is that there's a big difference between education and prohibition.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, respectfully, being in a position of authority to dictate the behaviors of the residents of the community, I think you have to be careful about how you approach this and without the, again, I don't have a stake in this game. I don't like the idea at all. I teach my children not to do these things, and when I see folks in a public place, do I assume they're going to immediately go home and start puffing on the next e-cigarette? They find, no, because this is part of the education process. But again, a prohibition is a bridge too far. It's, it's something where you're basically saying, "The science is settled, this is proven harmful, and even if it isn't proven harmful eventually, we did it for the good of the kids." I just, I can't do that. You know, it's, to me, if the science comes down and it says that, yes, it is, it's something that does have a secondhand smoke issue and it could, you know, and potentially harm kids, then, yeah, I think we can go there. But I'm, I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to ban e-cigarettes at this point.
I would like to make a motion.
Just a second here, I make sure I got my page right. Yes, I move, we introduce ordinance number 1579 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending Chapter 8.64 of the San Clemente Municipal Code, amending the 8.64.020 definitions."
Second.
Motion by Everett, second by Donchak. Oh, hold on, did you read the? Oh, read the whole thing, okay. A motion by Everett, second by Donchak. All those in favor?
Aye. I was, I was going to make a substitute motion that...
Why don't we finish this motion?
Okay.
No.
We already did.
Okay. Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No, I'm saying all those in favor? Sorry, go ahead.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Fails, two, three. Entertain a, yeah, I'm sorry. That would be Brown, Hamm, and Baker opposed. We'd entertain a substitute motion.
And Pam, is there some way to, to put, to remove e-cigarettes from this ordinance here and leave the marijuana component in there?
Marijuana is already illegal in our public spaces.
Exactly. Because it's crack under...
Exactly.
State and federal law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
And I'm not making a substitute motion. Thank you.
Motion fails.
Hang on a second. In, in the definitions here, why did you put marijuana in there?
Because e-cigarettes, marijuana can be in the form of the e-cigarettes. And we will probably be seeing more marijuana smoking. We're seeing this in Colorado. There is vaping of, of the marijuana. It's very prevalent in Colorado right now because it's legal for the recreational. So it's not legal, though, for them to be smoking that in the places that smoking is not allowed. So right now, marijuana smoking is not allowed in our parks and all those other places. However, talking with law enforcement, it is, it's very difficult because they don't know if they're smoking this or that or whatever. So they're going to continue to have, have those issues.
Can I, I'm sorry. Can I just jump in for just a quick sec?
Yes, please.
If they're having a hard time determining whether there's marijuana in, in the vapor that is being smoked through the e-cigarette, aren't they going to have that same hard time regardless of whether it violates federal law, state law, or a city ordinance?
Yes.
There you go.
I'm just, I, I'm trying to understand why we're putting it into a city ordinance when it's going to be equally as difficult to enforce. I mean, I'm just, I'm sorry, I just, I, okay, my last meeting, I just thought I'd throw it out there, just having a hard time with understanding, because it's already illegal.
Yeah, regardless of the delivery method.
It's illegal.
It's illegal.
It's just illegal to smoke marijuana in public places, whatever form you're doing it in, as is smoking crack. You don't get, you don't get to, you just don't get to do that under federal law or state law, regardless of the form that you're doing it in. And so whether it's done through vapors, or whether it's done through rolling it into a cigarette, or whether it's done in a bong, or however you, you want to smoke it, it's illegal.
That is true. Now, however, this does reinforce that concept, and what has happened with our police department, though, is that they've had a difficult time sometimes explaining that to those who have those cards, is that marijuana smoking is illegal in these public spaces. And so if this is reinforcing that law, and if it becomes recreationally allowable in our state, which it probably will in the next year or two, then it makes it even stronger that it's no marijuana smoking is allowed in those public spaces, period. It just makes it stronger. But yes, you are correct in that, and under the law, they are not supposed to.
Because it's illegal.
Because it's illegal.
It's already on the books.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm very comfortable. So to reinforce to the residents of San Clemente, you cannot smoke marijuana in public places. Or crack cocaine. Let's move on. Chief, are we okay here? Yeah, okay. Or he will find you and arrest you subsequently. And thank you. All right, so I think we're clear. Thank you.
Oral communications, part two. I don't have any cards. So moving on to reports. City manager?
Yes, I did want to introduce Lieutenant Dave Moody, who is out here. I think the council have met him, but I think this is his first council meeting, right? So he's been a little bit under the weather, but he's doing a good job so far this week. He survived almost two weeks. And then I also, just real quickly, I did attend the bidders conference, per se, and that's what I was going to ask Pam, but I think she walked out, because I don't know how many bidders we had. But we did have a pretty good turnout up at the Aquatic Center for walking the property and kind of determining, we were trying to determine, we were trying to relay the message. Courtney Sandcastle, yes.
Oh, thank you, okay.
The sensory garden, what is he talking about?
Yeah, right.
It was that, it was that e, it was that e-cigarette thing, you know? So anyway, yeah, it throws everybody off. But we did have a good turnout, they walked the property, and we got some good feedback from them, you know, so we're just going to cross our fingers and hope that we come in within budget. But I did hear some fairly, you know, I had a couple of questions from some folks that I know, and so hopefully we'll...
What date will the bids be open?
You stumped me. You stumped me. I don't remember when they're going to be open. I want to, is Pam, or is Pam or Sharon back there?
Yeah, Courtney Sandcastle, the sensory garden. April 16th. Thank you. Yes, thanks.
City attorney?
Uncharacteristically, I actually do have a minor report, and that is just to thank you guys for having let me serve as your city attorney for the past two years and use your assistant city attorney forever. It has been just wonderful, and I have very much appreciated it. Just wanted to thank you guys again.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
No, didn't we finish that off?
We finished?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. It all went back to you. Remember, it all went back to you.
Okay, the next item is selection of city representative to Modoc Board and Member Agency Elected Officials Forum. Modoc has requested that, that cities appoint an elected official to represent the city at the Modoc Board and Member Agency Elected Officials Forum on April 3rd in Fountain Valley.
I'm going to volunteer to attend and represent San Clemente at that.
Anybody want a dog?
All right.
Bob Baker has, has opted to volunteer for this. Do we need to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Nominate, Bob.
Second, then nomination.
Nomination by Lori, second by Hamm Everett. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Pass is 5-0.
Okay. Council roundtable.
Start, Chris, you want to go first?
No.
No, I don't want to go first. Jim, you want to go first?
I have nothing to say.
Jim, it's, Jim's, okay, Jim's got nothing to say.
Except for that you had a great walk, I'm sure you're going to talk about it.
I've been chatting a little bit about that.
Because that was absolutely great.
I will cover a couple of items. I don't have a slideshow. I did get, Jim, I have to blame you for this, she'll enter from San Clemente Times, because I had many people who called me saying you did a terrific pose for the cover of the San Clemente Times, like I was in some model. But...
I had the back of my, the bald spot on my head was on the front.
I told them that. Did you see Jim's bald spot? It was beautiful.
I forget which one of the two of them was, was right on the front page, and there it was.
Anyway, I, you know, I anticipated, know what to expect. I thought we'd maybe have 23 people show up. We had 160, and it felt like it was, fortunately, we had a good turnout, and Steve Craig, Craig related, came out and led the term, soft answered a lot of very direct questions about the project. I think folks were able to, you know, get a view for the project based on that. And then we walked across the bridge, first group across the bridge, and it felt like it really helped impart some information to the community and clarify a number of things. They took a poll, and it was 75% of the attendees were from San Clemente, and most of them were from the Broadmore Marblehead areas. And so it was very well attended. I did get a lot of emails from people who said that they missed out because of the Swallow's Day Parade. And so I'm going to be seeing if maybe we get another walk schedule when we get closer towards, you know, maybe some additional grading or other items later on in the year. I also had the opportunity to go on Meals for Wheels for the Senior Center, which was very cool. Met some really nice folks around town, and I'd like to thank the Senior Center for allowing me to do that. And then lastly, this Friday, as was mentioned by, by the folks at the Public Works, OC Public Works, we're going to have the groundbreaking for Lapada, excuse me, for, for the extension, for Lapada Extension. And that's going to be at 10 o'clock this Friday, right at the end of Lapada, and they're going to have a little ceremony out there, turn some dirt, and hopefully get a place to drive on another few years. So, on what we would call Avenida Lapada, not Lapada Avenue. So, and by the way, if they say Lapada Avenue, isn't Lapada the duck or the silver or something like that? What is Lapada? The duck? Maybe they should just call it the Duck, the Duck Avenue, and just be done with it, you know?
Is it?
Pada?
Lapada would be a male duck, and Lapada would be a female duck.
The female duck, then. That's it. I'm all done.
I have two. One is the SARA Affordable Housing Groundbreaking was yesterday, was well-attended, and that project's in motion. And we just need to be real careful as it goes forward to make sure that the traffic and the community isn't too disrupted as the project moves on. But Orange County Business Council was there to kind of, yeah, yeah, so that was very good. I would like to agendize with Councilmember Hamm's permission, an update from the animal shelter. And what I'd like to do is have the executive director come and do five to 10 minutes for the council on what's going on out there, with a specific emphasis on enforcement, because I'm getting a little bit of pushback, you probably all are too, about the dogs being off-leash and how are these new... being off-leash, and how are these new expanded park permissions going to work? So if you could pass that on, and we could do that maybe in the next month, have the animal shelter just give us an update on what's going on. Because we're...
We've been, we've been discussing that point exactly, and we've been trying to find out, look across the nation and see what other plans communities use when they do expand their parks, and ways we can maybe educate as opposed to ticket.
Yeah.
So we're looking at ways to do that.
Great, great.
Because we're here to serve, we're not here to ticket, so.
Great.
That's the goal. But yeah, we can do that, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay. adjournment?
I think that's it. I don't have anything else.
Okay.